This meeting to order of the Hudson Board of Education, Tuesday, August 12th, at 6:30. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand.
(inaudible) 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 Okay, I understand Mr. Holland is not going to be here this evening, so we'll need a clerk for the meeting. Anybody wish to volunteer to serve as clerk?
(inaudible)
Okay, Cindy. Thank you. Board members have a copy of the agenda in front of them. And do we have some changes, Mary?
We do, and they are all in the area of topics for action. And what we're going to do, first of all, is move the consent items to the end of the action section. So that will become nine F, and that number one, personnel, two expenditures, and then number three, the policy 5403, students with disabilities. The three and four, the current three and four, we are going to move three into nine D and take it out of the consent items, since you didn't have the background information. And then number four is going to be nine E, and that's early childhood Head Start Collaboration Agreement, and we will move that to nine E. So it will also be out of the consent agenda items.
Board members understand those changes?
I believe so.
If so, I'll entertain a motion for the new agenda. We have a motion by Lynn, a second by Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. We'll move on to item number four, contribution to the gateway from the Hudson Community Foundation. Mary?
We're very pleased this evening to receive a donation for the gateway from the Hudson Community Foundation, and Susie Gilbert is here to present that to our President Dan Shurnehoy. And Tricia Christensen is also here from the Hudson Community Foundation.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
While Dan's coming back up here, I just want to certainly thank the foundation for recognizing the community asset that we have in the gateway that is under County Road Act. And what a wonderful opportunity will provide learning opportunity for our students, our staff, and certainly for our community in the future. So thank you very much for recognizing that.
I also, yeah, want to underscore that thanks, Susie, and the Community Foundation for that gift. And, you know, it's just another step in completing that goal of ours, so thanks again. With that, we'll move on to item five, approval of the July 8, 2008 Regular and Closed Session Board of Education meeting. Minutes. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Cindy.
Second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. I believe we do have some correspondence.
Yes.
Cindy, can you?
We do. We have a thank you from Scott and Barb Huffman for flowers that we sent when Scott lost his mother. Scott is an associate principal at the Hudson High School, and we just want to, you know, say we empathize and hope it's going well for the family.
Thank you, Cindy. Next item is the superintendent's report. Mary?
First, I'd like to talk about the Rivercrest Dedication Day, Designing for the Future, that we're very excited about, and certainly we invite and welcome and encourage our community to attend this event, this family event. There will be fun and learning activities for all, all ages. And some of those activities, although we don't have everything finalized, the day is on September 27th, that is finalized, Saturday, September 27th, from 9:00 to 2:00 PM. And it will occur at Rivercrest at the site and also at Camp St. Croix. So it's a combination of using both facilities and using the gateway, the asset that we just talked about, and the Hudson Community Foundation just generously donated to. So it will combine both facilities. And at 9:00, we'll start with a fun and fitness walk run. We hope to have a balloon launch. There will be a Nordic walking system demonstrated. Family activities on both sites include a family tic-tac-toe. It's really an environmental game that will encompass both the campsite and the school site. And then at Camp St. Croix, there will be activities such as orienteering, a nature hike, wood cookies, and I don't know what that is, so I'm anxious to find out, and animal adaptations. We also will have a short dedication ceremony featuring some of our students. Dan will speak at that ceremony, and we'll also place the items in the time capsule. Later on, there will be a picnic lunch, and so we invite everyone to join us, bring blankets and chairs, and then we'll have some additional activities in the afternoon. In our gym at Rivercrest, there will be activities sponsored by Hoffman Architects and our construction managers for both students or young people and for adults as well. So that's kind of a cap, a recap of some of those things that are going to happen. The details will be finalized and then be on our website. So we encourage people to go to our website to find out that more information about that day. Again, it's Saturday, September 27th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and we hope we have a great big crowd helping us celebrate the opening of Rivercrest and all the things it represents for our community and for our students. Moving on, Rivercrest Sustainability Signs, S, our communication specialist, Tracy Habishaline, to address this. She's done the primary work on these sustainable signs, so I'd like her to talk about those.
Thank you. Actually, one of the first times you'll get to see the sustainability signs will be at the dedication day. We're hoping the tour, which these signs will help people to be able to go through the building with paper in hand, a brochure that we're having designed in cooperation with Anderson Windows, so that people can go through the building, tour, and see all the features in the building, the sustainability features. You have on page 14 a copy of what the sign looks like, so these are going to be permanent signs that will be placed at the different features throughout the building. So we have areas on recycling or recycling reuse and, like, looking at the ceiling tiles and identifying those features. Water conservation are some of the other features. So all of the different items within the building that we want people to understand how we are conserving and saving with this building, we will be providing through this tour and through the signs. And I think you've seen some of the information along the way, and actually talked with Andersons again today and talked about what the brochure will look like. It's looking really neat with photos of the school, but also will open up into a large map, so the signs will be identified within that map, and people can read each item and then find those within the building.
We've talked about Rivercrest as a teaching tool, and this is one of those opportunities that we have to continue to tell the story of Rivercrest and what it represents, both to our students and to our staff and to the community. So these signs will tell that story.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Tracy. We'll move on to, excuse me, reports. Rivercrest Project Budget Cost Savings and Success Update. Tim?
Okay, thank you. We have Mark Hanson, the Director of Sustainable Design for Hoffman, here in attendance, along with other members of the Hoffman team. And Mark is here to talk a little bit about the Rivercrest project and discuss the sustainable design features and looking at cost per square foot, et cetera. So with that, I'll let Mark take it from there.
Good. Thank you, Tim, and I want to thank the board for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. It's a chance to give us, to give you, an update and as to how the project is coming. And I guess it's a little early for the final exam, as we've still got a little bit of work going on out there, but it's coming right along. When we started this project with you and this great partnership, there were really five goals involved that we heard from you. We heard you wanted a 21st century school, flexible, adaptable, and a place that was a learning tool in and of itself. You wanted it to be green, sustainable. You picked the word, but something that was going to be environmentally supportive, environmentally friendly for the school and for the community. You had a deadline that was very, very aggressive, 20-month schedule, and you had a budget that had been predetermined by a referendum. And that was, so the task was, okay, let's meet these goals, and here is a budget. And then one of your board members, Dick Munich, said, you know, we've got really high expectations for this. We want a wow factor. And back in a very snowy, freezing rain late afternoon or early evening a couple of years ago, we presented this slide about sustainable schools and some of the things that were meant by it, how we, you know, we do pay attention to issues of site, of water use, of energy, of the materials in the school, and of the indoor air quality that comes out of it, and what is your operational cost and experience going to be with that. And now, there are many things to be said about the school, but here's a list of a few of the salient features. I mean, the increased shell insulation, the glass is a wonderful story, working with Anderson Windows to come up with a glass that they had not previously offered, and one that allows and enables daylight, but you get to control the glare and get to control the heat gain when you don't want it. And you can do that without requiring those internal shades, and you then lose the view. And lighting, classroom lighting power density, that's a lot of technical speak there, but it's a very few watts per square foot of space to get the kind of light you want when you need the electric lights, and just a series of other things. But I think the bottom line that that leads to is that we've got a school that you'd said we would like to get at least a lead silver rating, and right now, we are pushing onwards, working on getting a gold rating, and we'll be staying with that path. One of the inevitable questions that comes up is, well, if you're going to do a sustainable school, oh, it's going to cost more. And, you know, if we're going to make this mainstream, it's got to be something where we want to be cost competitive. And we tried to, what does cost competitive mean? And one of the regional studies that we looked at considered 17 elementary schools. They had a mean cost from, for those schools built in 1999 to 2003 of 148 per square foot. There is a study on the U.S. Green Building website by Madison &amp; Morris that found just in the three years from 2003 to 2006, cost inflation, construction cost inflation just took off. And you can see, they estimated in their studies a 25% to 30% increase in cost just in those years. So if we adjust that data from those 17 schools by just the 25% for just those three years, and that for maybe some costs that we know have gone up since then, that gets you to a conservative estimate of $185 a square foot for a conventional school. So where are we at Rivercrest? And is it being constructed at or below conventional cost? Well, we just told you this, that based on that set of 17 elementary schools in Minnesota, it looks like those schools would cost about $185 a square foot, including, by and large, everything, the design fees, construction fees, everything but land purchased. That study, I would note, had a little inconsistency from school to school. If you had some fees missing that should have been in there, a couple did have land costs, but by and large, it's a fairly apples-to-apples comparison. There's some software out there that construction professionals are familiar with, RS Means, and we said, well, let's, in theory, build a conventional school in the Twin Cities. And what does that tell us, using today's data in that database? It says 183 a square foot. We also have some local comparisons. New Richmond Elementary is being built right now at 184 a square foot. Twin Lakes Elementary, which is in the Elk River School District, a little northwest of the Twin Cities, that is a school built two years ago, anticipating a lead silver rating. It's not come through yet, that I've seen, but that school is 193. Well, we know that Rivercrest is being delivered at $167 a square foot with fees, site preparation, and we're targeting, as I mentioned, lead gold certification. So are we building, or are you building Rivercrest Elementary at a cost at or below conventional? I think it's, the answer is a resounding yes. And of course, one of the great success stories in terms of using a local material and in a very innovative local manufacturer, local materials and innovative partnership, there's a picture of your Anderson Windows. It's got a few stickers and some protective covering still on it, but I think you get the point. And now I'd like to introduce Mark Bulkey, our Senior Land Planner at Hoffman, who's going to tell you a little more about the project.
Thank you, Mark. It's nice to be here again, seeing some familiar faces, and I haven't been here in a while, so it's nice to see you all. I'm just going to touch quickly on some of the highlights having to do with site design and site issues on the project. The first real highlight, or I guess I should say challenge, on the project, and I went through the trenches with some of you, Mary and Tim specifically, and Dick, was we didn't know where we were going to end up as far as jurisdiction when we started this project. And it took us quite a while, but we all worked together with the city, mainly with the city, on annexation, and there were some real challenges in that, some impact fees and off-site utility extensions and things like that. And there was some opposition along the way, but we were able to overcome that and to the benefit of the school district, I think, ended up annexing to the city. As far as the site design, we were challenged early to come up with a safe, innovative, and sustainable site design, and I think we've achieved all three, and I hope, as you experienced the school, you'll agree. As far as innovative, I think we've tried to create a really safe circulation pattern on site. We've tried to separate visitor areas from bus drop-off areas. We've tried to create safe drop-off areas for all the students in the back of the building and the front of the building. We put, a trail was a priority that we were given early on, so that's been incorporated into the site design. And then the partnerships on the project were also, I think, innovative and very encouraging. We worked closely with the YMCA, and especially the school district worked closely with the YMCA on creating the tunnel that you see the picture of here, so they can share facilities. So that's going to be really nice for the future use of both sites. Some sustainable features in the site design include native and sustainable landscaping. Over half the site will be, has been seeded with sustainable and native prairie and wildflowers. Stormwater management on site exceeds both DNR and LEED requirements. Will be capturing water to exceed the water quality and quantity requirements. And there's no onsite irrigation. It's been designed to hopefully not to, I guess, to be very sustainable in that it will not need irrigation to maintain the vegetation on site. Personally, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for allowing me and Hoffman to be involved in the project. It's been a very rewarding process. I think you have a great group of people and have really pulled this thing together, and it's been great to work with you. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kathryn Crookshank, the Senior Project Designer.
Thank you, Mark. I would like to echo Mark's thanks. When you have a really good design, it's usually because you're working with a really good client. So I'd like to say that right at the outset. We had a really good client, very honest, very forthcoming in the wants and needs, and very honest also in the criticism and pushing us to do better. So thank you so much. It's been a real pleasure working with all of you. We were challenged to come up with a striking exterior, something unique, something that fitted in with the site, captured the organic natural landscape, neutral colors that wouldn't date, and we came up with this idea of these roofs which have arcs that all point in one direction towards the big arc, which is the gym roof, and perhaps captures the idea of a windswept prairie. But then I do remember the last time I presented to the board was the day they came up with a name for the school, which was Rivercrest, which fitted right in with the theme with waves, so that was just great. So that basically explains how we came up with the exteriors, and we've got at the front, the fluid walls which sort of echo the shoreline of the river, so we're just trying to keep that river theme going. And, next slide. On the interior, too, we have waves. You see waves in the ceiling, waves, if you look carefully at that glass wall that separates the media center from the main corridor, waves painted on the walls, and this amazing mural. We had this huge space, huge wall, which needed a mural. And so two parents who are artists got together with a whole bunch of kids, and what you see in that mural is the history of Hudson with drawings that the kids drew that were projected onto the wall. There are also little poems, and it's a really, really exciting piece, and I think absolutely You'll also have noticed, or will notice, as you go through the school, lots of strategies for capturing daylight, natural light. This cuts down your utility bills because you don't need to use as much artificial light, and you'll see huge windows, you'll see what we call clear-story windows, which are those windows high up at the ceiling. We're using glass block to creatively bring light into the spaces. That lantern-like shape you're seeing on your right is actually the guidance center. And behind that glass block, there is a clear-story window. So we thought, instead of just letting the light from the clear-story window light the interior of the space, the glass block would also bring the light through into the corridors. The result is a very airy, bright feeling, and I think it'd be very cheerful. Many of these spaces are used by both students and the community. You're looking at the main foyer on your right, and the other two pictures are of the cafeteria. The cafeteria is very much a multi-purpose space. Obviously, it's used for meals, but there's a stage, which is not just a stage, it's also part of the dining space, so we didn't create extra space to create the stage, it's just part of the functional space. And it's also used for school-age childcare. And so you see a door pretty much in the center of that picture, and that door will have a bell. Parents can drop their kids off directly at this cafeteria and pick them up directly from there, so you don't have to leave the whole school open after hours so parents can pick up their kids. So they'll be secure when they're in the after or before-school program, and they'll also be secure during the day, because if you look up at the top right corner again, we have a vestibule which lets the kids, lets anybody into the school, but only into the vestibule. They'll then have to ring a bell, be buzzed into the office, check in at the office before they can get into the rest of the school. So we're trying to keep your kids safe. We have a very functional layout. The areas in blue are the academic areas, the classrooms. Right in the center, we've got the gym, and the rest of the spaces on the left are basically the shared areas that are used by all the students as well as the community. A central corridor that runs around the gym to the front entrance and also to the rear entrance is basically what's open to the community, the wings can be shut off. We also considered the placement of the various spaces, thinking about the time of day, where the sunlight will be, and tried to orient this building to minimize heat Part of the core of the classroom design is the small learning community concept. We talked to teachers and staff and got their ideas. Hudson Prairie was a reference point because they really liked the pod system, but as we got through discussions, we saw that they weren't working quite as well as they might, and so we separated out storage from resource areas and from the main classrooms. On the left, you see the model that we showed the design committee, and on the right, you can see how those classrooms actually turned out. Hopefully, they'll work really well. There's great supervision into those resource areas from both classrooms, and those are daylit, and some of the light also filters through into the main classroom. So again, you get a sense of a really bright, airy classrooms. You can also see the direct, indirect light fixtures, which bounce light up at the ceiling and diffuse it through the room, so you don't need as many fixtures as you would if they all were downlights. We use models to develop our ideas and to show the design committee where we're going. Here you can see, side by side, the model and the finished product. I'm happy to say we think the finished product turned out better than the models, and a lot of the credit for this is due to our Senior Project Architect, Mike Borsky, who will tell you how he got from the designs to the built form.
Thank you, Kathryn. Good evening, everyone. What you see on the screen right now is the same space, believe it or not. Probably about four to six weeks ago, the photo on the left represents many different things, mechanicals, electrical, plumbing, heating, design ideas, many different functional as well as aesthetic ideas combined into a ceiling, which eventually became the photograph on the right, which is there today. My challenge, my task, my charge in this project was to take and work directly with the designers, with the owner's functional requirements, the staff input that we had, and mesh that with the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, heating, technology, sustainability, and bring those things all together and marry them. That's not always an easy task. You should see how close and tight the ductwork is above that ceiling, but it turned out very, very nice. And you'll see, when you do have a chance to visit the school, it really turned out wonderfully. Kathryn's design ideas were just, they brought the building to life. It really, it does not do it justice to see what you're seeing in front of you here. You need to visit the space. It's just fantastic. Mark, thanks. This is our gymnasium, your gymnasium. I guess it's ours until we turn it over in a week or so. You see the waveforms carried through again. You see the natural daylighting from high above. Now, that's about three stories in the air. We have a two-story building on the outside wall of that building, and it brings in a wonderful natural light. In this case, the lights you can see are on. Those are very high-efficiency lighting fixtures. You see them to the top and to the left. The floor is a beautiful wood floor, and much of the wood in this building is forestry-certified wood. We were able to grab that lead point. The finished floor itself was not, but we had an option. As an owner team, we sat down, we talked to the owner. It was quite expensive to provide forestry service, finished hardwood versus a very high-quality regional product. We were able to capture the lead point without having to expend those extra dollars to get the forestry-certified top woods. So all through this project, we measured, how do we save money? Where do we find the best value? How do we continue on and make it a very sustainable building? On the right-hand side, you'll see bleachers. Those were actually Those were actually reused from another one of your facilities. They're in, in good condition. They fit right into the design. There was no reason not to incorporate them in rather than go out and purchase new bleachers. Here's another way we saved a few dollars. We just decided we weren't going to put partitions in the toilet rooms. No, this is, this is, this is a shot early on in construction. We wanted to capture the toilets in a larger picture. Obviously, once those partitions get in there, it's much more difficult to see. These are waterless urinals. They don't use any water in the flushing at all. It's, it's a chemical system that we worked very closely with Jim Staskel to make sure he was comfortable with that product and the maintenance of those. The toilets themselves are dual-flush. You flush up for liquids, and you flush down for solids. And the up-flush uses half the water as the down-flush. So again, a way to save and conserve on the natural resources. The high-quality materials, tile floors, one of Mr. Staskel's requirements was, I want that ceramic tile all the way to the ceiling, because it just makes maintenance so much easier. Apparently, he is going back and retrofitting some of your existing schools with, not only from the Wayne's Coat up because of those issues. And with this slide, I'm going to turn it over to Sam Stats, who's our Senior Project Manager. He's going to tell you a little bit about safeguarding our lead credits and all kinds of other good things. Sam?
All right. Thanks, Mike, and aloha, board. I think Mike has got the right idea. This is a celebration. This is success, and I think he's dressed the only way appropriately, and I'm a little overdressed. So, with that, I know we're on a timeline, I'll continue on. The question that may run into somebody's head is, okay, how did we do this? We saw the slides before, $184, $185, $183, and then we had ours at $167, that we were able to deliver this. That comes from good design, that comes from a process that we like to call total project management. And Hoffman's process, really, working with yourselves, making decisions along the ways, Mike just indicated, that are intelligent decisions, that build sustainably but do it at the right price. That's really what we did. So we get the design, and now we have to safeguard these lead credits, is how we titled this. You can see in there, there's a piece of ductwork, that's part of the lead program. You have to make sure that the air quality is, is done at a controlled environment. You see the recycle bins up on the right. We've actually recycled 97% by weight, if this project, with all of the construction waste, which is an incredible diversion from the landfills. You can see the erosion control measures. There's a number of different things, but you can see some of these here as far as delivering through the construction process of, of what we need to do in order to deliver by LEED standards. Also mentioned earlier on was the aggressive 20-month schedule. When you throw annexation and the planning into that 20 months, that pretty much made us say wow, because that was pretty tough at that time. But we were able to do that because we've had some separate bid package. And by delivering the integrated process, and you've got the design and the build, we can do different bid packages. So we did opt, actually, at the beginning of this project, way back when, is we decided to do a structures package first so that we could get going with the building. And then we actually put together another bid package that was going to take us through the completion. And we were able to deliver both packages on time and on budget as far as for the design schedule. So, doing the TPM process, we're able to maintain our schedule, as well as just obviously the coordination in the field, weekly meetings, and, and getting some good quality subcontractors to do that as well. Staying on budget, everything comes with a number tag to it. Well, we were given a number that was tagged by somebody else. So that was a challenge right from the get-go, but we were up for it, and we were anxious to have that opportunity because we felt we could do so. We did construct it actually under budget, and we actually did not have to touch any of the interest earnings, which is something that I think, as you go into projects that have referendum, that's not all common, as common as what you may think. What we've done through our process as well is we've been able to take those savings and put them into features in the building. And because there's so many, I took the liberty of listing a few. We've had radius walls and radius ceilings, the mural, operable windows, tile floors. We had the trail that was added, some additional cabinetry that was added, smart boards. The technology budget on this project was pretty extensive, and there's a lot of high-end technology that we were able to take the savings and reinvest that into the school so it provides better learning environments for the students. Gym partitions, full-height ceramic to help the operational cost again, and keeping the environment safe and clean for the students as well. Number of different things, and we've also incorporated a lot of off-site costs. The annexation cost, the water line, the Highway F, the extensions and the improvements to that. We had the LEED certification cost, the paperwork portion of this that's above and beyond typical project. We've been able to incorporate the sustainable pieces, but there's still that paperwork. All of that totals close to $650,000 to $700,000, depending on how you want to do that. And it actually was all incorporated into this, which are some things that are some extraordinary costs, but were again able to be incorporated, all at or below the industry So the end story is, you have a sustainable 21st century school that was built on schedule and on budget. And that, to Hoffman, was kind of a wow factor for us. It was something that was a challenge, and we're all extremely proud that we were able to be a part of this, and we really appreciate the opportunity from yourselves and from the entire Hudson community for that opportunity. So on behalf of everybody at Hoffman, this is a portion of us here. You can see some of the team members, of which I'd like to acknowledge, we have some of the team members out in the, in the audience as well. Kurt Teal was our project manager in the field, he was a project superintendent. Justin Yatter is one of our job captains in the office, and he's been very integral with the lead portion of this project. You have Beth Pipcorn, she's the project administrator, and she pretty much tries to keep me and Joe Harvey sane, if anybody's met Joe. Amanda Saylor is our interior designer, and again, very integral into the sustainable pieces and the choices that we've had. One last comment, and then I'll open it for questions. We did not, in the effort to be sustainable, we did not make any copies of this, but we'd be happy to print anything if you want one, or we'd be happy to email one if anybody is interested. Maybe just let Mary know, and I'd be happy to get you something afterwards. So, with that, I'll open it up to any questions that anybody may have.
Thanks, Sam. Board members have questions of any, any of the team with Hoffman?
I do.
Cindy?
I have questions. First, maybe what we could do is have a, an email, an electronic copy of this on the district's website. That would probably be the most, you know, effective way for us to share this information and access it.
Be happy to.
I just, and I wanted to say that it has been spectacular, working with you all, and the building that has come out of this is really, really spectacular, too. And I, I wanted to ask, my question is about, it's specifically about what you said, the, in terms of the light, the windows not requiring blinds. And my question is, how does that work?
How does that work? Well, we have, I'm going to let that answer by Mark Anton. He's very involved with the window and actually helped design the prototype for Anderson, which is a pretty cool story in itself, but I note, Tim, we're at 25 minutes already.
Well, the, you know, the, the problem the human eye has is that eye is, is really adaptable, but, but huge contrasts are difficult. And when one has maybe up to 3,000 or 4,000 or 5,000-foot candle outside, and then you go in and you're reading, when you're reading, you say your eye needs 30-foot candles. That contrast doesn't work too good, and that's why so often for us, we go out with, wear sunglasses a lot. All our cars have various levels of pretty aggressive tinting. Well, that same concept is what is used in the windows. It's, it review, what the E coatings do, and, and there's two sets of E coatings, which is unusual. Usually, there's one. There's two sets, in, in your east, west, and south glass. And that reduces the amount of light that can come through, so it knocks that down so your contrast isn't so great. So you're still getting light in, but when you look out, you're not being blinded. And it's only when you're blinded that then you reach for the blinds or the curtains or whatever, because you just can't take it. Or you, if someone's standing against the window, you see the silhouette. Well, by reducing that visual transmittance by the selection of the glass, you now say, ooh, I can still look outside, and I'm not killing my eyes, I'm not squinting. There's light coming into the space, and the glass also controls the unwanted solar heat gain, so you're not loading on your air conditioning load. So, it's that, if you will, that shading or that reduction of light transfer, that is the key element in that, in that glass working, so you, you don't need to have the blinds to control the glare, and therefore you've now kept your views. Does that make sense?
It does. In other words, what you're saying is math and science education created that window.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
One thing I did notice, we actually had this in our office as well, and when I had first learned about this, if you open the window when you're out there, stick your hand behind the window and then pull it, you'll see a huge difference just in that light, which you can't notice when the window's not open. So, you have operable windows, you have that chance to do that. So, I just offer that opportunity when you get out there to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Mark?
Yeah, thanks, Dan. No questions, really, I guess just a couple of comments. I see our former distinguished facilities chair in the back there, Mr. Dick Minnick. Nice to see you, Dick, and Patty, too. I'm sure that Dick would agree that the wow factor has been delivered. I think it's just a phenomenal building. It's just, it's just a showpiece, I think. And I think one of the things I'm particularly proud of with this building, in addition to the sustainability features, is the fact that we've been able to foster, excuse me, so many good community partnerships with this. We mentioned the Anderson story, which I think is just terrific that we were able to take this incorporation in a new direction that they hadn't, hadn't explored before. With the YMCA opportunities for programming going forward, it's going to be terrific. And I think we can't overlook the fact, even the city of Hudson, that, you know, agreeing to annex this and make it all that more, I think, perfect for our community. So, ladies and gentlemen, Hoffman, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Any other board member questions, comments?
I just have a question on the LEED certification. When will we know as the process goes, how, what level of certification we've met? Whether it's gold or?
There'll be, there'll be one submittal that will be put in. What we have right now, what we're targeting is gold, and we have a little bit of a cushion. There's a point system, and we've got about three points cushion, I think, maybe, Justin? About them? Three or four points right now we've got as a cushion. So, what happens is you submit the, you submit the, the project electronically, of course, over the internet, and they review it, and then they actually will come back to us with their comments. And if there is a discrepancy or they've got questions, there is a review time, for lack of better terms, that we're able to address their concerns. And then that usually takes, I think, maybe three, four months for them. I mean, this, it's, it's somewhat difficult to process because it takes them a while to get back. So we'll have that submittal package done as soon as possible afterwards. We're targeting, hopefully by September, we'll have our package put together, and it'll be three, four months after that. And then there'll be a review time if we've got to answer any questions that they had. So it, it could be six months, would be optimistic, before we would know for sure. But we'll have a good idea after we get the original package back.
Great, thank you.
I wanted to just say one other thing, too, in, in respect to Mark's comment. This has definitely been, what you see up on the screen is a, is a small portion of the team. And, and talking with Dick earlier tonight, I think he hit on it best, that this has definitely been a team effort. Not only with the people that you see on the screen, but Hoffman's got, I think we had 34 people actually touch the project in our office at one point in time or another. In addition to that, we had consultants that were brought on board. Steve Carlson is a, is a third-party commissioning agent, as part of the lead. He's another prime example of somebody that Hoffman uses as, as a, as a resource, and we've been able to work with yourselves, and we consider you are part of our team as well. And it's really been a team effort. So, all of the work that's been done, it, it's not easy, and it is a challenge, but it's fun. We enjoy it, and thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Sam.
It really is a neat project, as Mark pointed out. You know, the fact that we're able to balance, you know, the energy efficiency, which often, you know, drives costs up with building projects, and that I was somewhat skeptical of at the beginning, but to be able to achieve that at a very, you know, reasonable cost to the school district, you know, thanks to, you know, you guys as well, as, as Mark pointed out, the partnerships that we've had, corporate partnerships, and I think we also have to recognize the city of Hudson and the surrounding townships and county that have been cooperative with us throughout this project as well. So, thanks to everyone.
Mary?
I just would like to take us back, and you actually started this, Dan, to that decision, and I don't know if it was 20 months ago or whenever it was, when the facilities committee and also our construction design committee, internal one with Tim Erickson and Pat Hodges, the principal, and Jim Staskel, when we had to make a decision about whether to go for LEED certification. And it kind of represents many of the things that happened over this project. Hoffman shared their expertise with us, certainly challenged us to think about that, as they continued to do throughout the project. And we were challenged, because it was something we had never experienced, and those of you that went through that decision-making process, remember the, the motion that was passed was that that $130,000 had to be within the budget or we had to fundraise for it. And we thought for sure we were going to have to fundraise for it. And with Hoffman's problem-solving, their leadership, their team approach, being able to save dollars and reinvest it into quality, there, we were able to incorporate those dollars inside the budget. And not only, I think that well represents many other things that happened throughout this project, and the challenge that Hoffman gave to the Hudson School District, and also the Hudson School District gave to Hoffman. And we shared that as a team together, sharing each of our individual expertise and pulling that together to really create this project. And I think everybody around this table, the board, certainly has contributed to that as well. I thank Tim Erickson for his leadership. Jim Staskel has been our owner's rep onsite and representing us, and then certainly Pat Hodges, who has been working diligently on this project. It's very near and dear to her heart, and we'll be moving it forward. And we have learned, this building has been a teaching tool for us, that we will extend to the rest of the district sites, and we believe we've benefited in ways we never imagined through this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks again, Sam.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the second item under reports, SMART goals, results. Sandy?
The principals and I are looking forward tonight to sharing our 2007, 2008 SMART goal results. This work has been highly supported by PEG Shoemaker, our Associate Director of Learning Services. The presentation you see this evening is the joint efforts of PEG and our building principals, and I'm simply speaking on her behalf this evening. Some of you were in attendance last year and saw that our theme for our opening session of the 2007, 2008 school year was moving on up. And as a district, we have been focusing all year on our continuous improvement efforts and recognizing the need to move all students to higher levels of performance. Almost exactly two years ago, in August, I think it was August 6th and 7th, the Hudson School District, through a generous donation, generous grant through the Education Foundation, participated in a two-day SMART goal training workshop. And as you can see, SMART stands for Specific and Strategic, Measurable, Attainable, Results-Based, Time-Bound. Now, just after two years, we are still in the infancy stages as we build this new system of continuous improvement. In some improvement. In some cases, you'll see tonight, that we don't have baseline data quite yet. This year, that baseline data was created. In other cases, you'll see the assessments weren't fully developed or implemented. So, again, this year, we established those assessments, and we're creating the data. The SMART goal process is improving student learning results through focused, data-driven processes, shared responsibility and leadership, and ongoing collaboration. And you'll see a lot of those words used tonight by our principals. Our principals have been working to improve student learning and meet their SMART goal by doing the following with their teams: determining a focus area of improvement based on student and school data analysis, identifying specific student performance improvements that can be measured, establishing a baseline for an area of improvement, then establishing timelines for two performance periods, so a mid-year, end-of-year, gaining experience and knowledge about the SMART goal process, in order to develop stretch goals that are attainable. In addition, we're working with the building SMART team to design professional development to address those areas in need of improvement, discussing actions and progress toward making the goal with the superintendent, and reporting the goal and the results of the goal to the school board yearly. In addition to SMART goals, just to recognize that there's other things we're doing to also work on continuous improvement, we're increasing expectations for student and adult learning and performance, focusing on results. So, in other words, we're also looking at shifting our teacher eval process, our principal eval process, to also include improvement, data, and results in learning. Using research best practices in decision-making, seeking ways to structure the day that allows for high-quality professional development during the school day, and shifting, this is a big one in education, shifting from what is the teacher doing, so focusing on instruction, delivery, to what is the student learning. All right, with us, with me this evening are principals, and we'll come over one by one. First will be Ed Lucas, Principal of Hudson High School.
Good evening. Our target for our SMART goal, as presented last year, was to focus on our low-achieving students, and to help them reduce the number of Ds and Fs. And our goal was to shoot for that five percent by the end of this year. And we started with our baseline data. We actually had data from the last five years, but we needed to, as our enrollment changed, we began and focused with last year's data. And we had over twenty-six hundred grades of students that were Ds and Fs. Now, we have over twenty-one thousand grades that we have over the course of the year. And so, this is a very small number, and the easiest way to understand this baseline data without getting into those huge numbers. At the end of this year, we did achieve our goal, and reduced the number of Ds and Fs by ten percent over the course of the year. But, that did not come by itself. There were a number of things that entered into that ten percent reduction. When we, we look at how we achieved that goal, we have to go back a couple of years to, prior to Sandy's time, when we began an initiative at the high school, which was redesigning our curriculum, rewriting our curriculum according to the understanding by design. And that forced us, and forced our staff to look at our curriculum and set goals for each of our units, and help to understand what is it that we wanted to accomplish with each of those goals. And with the sixteen different departments and over twenty-one thousand grades, and it was a, quite a daunting task, and we are just finishing up with that initial initiative. And so, it began way back when. And when, three, two years ago, we also began another initiative, which was to reorganize our staff into interdisciplinary professional learning communities, which allowed our teachers to work within departments, to talk about student learning, and to begin focusing on how can we improve student learning. And then, last year, we began a process of assessment, taking a look at assessment, and connecting that with our UBDs. And so, in addition to working on those other initiatives, the SMART goal process really fit quite well into what we were looking to accomplish and to improve student learning. And one of the significant points that came, accomplishments that came out of this was creating the student-teacher assistant team, or what we call the STAT team, to work with those struggling students. And we developed a team of teachers from the high school, and worked with our counselors to create interventions for those students. So, when teachers in the classroom found that they met barriers with these struggling students, they can refer them to this particular team. We worked with the teachers, we involved the parents in the process as well, and began an intervention process for these students. And out of that, we are, we have created a pyramid of interventions. And this works not only with those students who are working with the STAT program, but also with other students as well. And an example was, last year in first semester, we always have students who failed classes. And math was an area that we wanted to focus on. So, what we did with those students who failed first semester Algebra I, we created another section to help those students repeat first semester of Algebra I. But then, we brought two teachers together, and used a, some of the tutor money that I have from an anonymous tutor donor, paid another teacher to team teach those students. We took fifteen of the students, and put them through Algebra I first semester again, and they were successful during that second semester of Algebra. And thirteen out of those fifteen students passed. And so, the extra attention, extra work by the two teachers together, and working with the parents, made a difference with those students. Another example would be that we used with our senior release program that we started two years ago, we allowed all of our seniors to sign up for senior release. However, we raised the bar this year, and that was any seniors who failed second semester of this past spring, or any juniors, excuse me, would not be allowed to participate in that release program. So, we raised the expectations across the board. There were a number of other minor interventions that will come out later. However, we are continuing working on this pyramid of interventions with our team of about twelve teachers and four administrators at the high school. Now, as we, we still have some barriers to overcome. And as I said, this year, we began the process of looking at assessment, understanding, assessment, and using that to help assess students on a regular basis, to help them to learn, and to help teachers find out where all students are at throughout the entire year. And that will make a big difference in, in helping to move students along, and in helping to improve student learning. Another area would be to establish common planning time. We are going to take our biology teachers this year, and they have common prep time together, so they can work in that professional learning community, and begin to plan the curriculum, work together, do assessment of all of the biology classes, and to make sure that they are providing a common experience for all of the students, to find out what they do right, as well as what they're doing wrong in those professional learning communities. And we'll continue to work with the teachers in helping to develop that pyramid of interventions. Now, as we look to the future, we have a three-year plan that we are working on to develop formative assessment practices, to help the guide teaching, to monitor student learning on a daily basis, to, so that we can bring all students along during the semester, and work with, and not leave any students behind. And we will continue to look at our schedule at the high school, and see how we can provide common planning time, so teachers can work within the departments in those professional learning communities, which research shows that is the most significant way to improve student learning. Having your teachers collaboratively work together in departments. Thank you.
Dan Koch, Principal at Hudson Middle School.
I feel like maybe I should, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth. Or could I do this? Could I do this a moment, Mr. Chairman?
There you go. There's the model.
As you, I'm sure have gone through and had an opportunity to preview these, I, I need to make a couple of comments to, can you hear me now? Oh, a couple of comments just to preface. We have been engaged in developing assessments at the middle school now for about two and a half years. I think we presented to the board our work in assessment, was it sometime last year? I'm trying to think when, when we did that. And that has tied into our efforts with regard to, to the SMART goal. And fundamentally, what we have created this year are the baseline numbers that we will be using in, in the future. But there were some very nice things that we, we encountered as we went along, along the way. You can see that our, our target basically was sixty-five percent of all of our students would achieve an A or a B on second semester summative assessments. I need to put a little asterisk by that as well, because those summative assessments, in some cases, they were a semester summative, and in others, they were common unit assessments. And that was in part due to the fact that one of our staff members was gone for a paternity leave for quite a long time, so eighth grade shifted to the semester assessment, as opposed to the individual unit assessments. But in all cases, these are common summative assessments. That is to say that those are assessments that are shared by everyone, and all students would take the same, the same exams. As you can see here, and this is the, sort of the executive summary here, but in, in grade eight, we achieved seventy-four point two percent on those summative tests. In grade seven, it was seventy-four point six, grade six, seventy point two. We basically picked sixty-five percent as the target, because we needed a place to start. And, and that's really what we, what we were taking, taking a look at there. If you were to break it down by the math courses that we offer, and again, this is why we're using this as baseline information, because over the last couple of years, we have reorganized our math curriculum. We used to have three sections, three levels of math, in sixth grade and in seventh grade. We've always had two in eighth. We have been gradually working toward two courses at each grade level, and in the process, increasing our expectations for those students. And what you can see here are the very specific results by the individual courses. Our algebra students in eighth grade achieved an eighty-four percent, as far as As and Bs, on their single second semester summative exam. And again, eighth grade used the summative semester exam. In pre-algebra, sixty-five percent. Now, it's important to note that when you look at pre-algebra Course Two and Course One, we are talking about a very, a much broader range of students than we've ever had before. Our students used to be divided into three levels, now into two. So, we've, we've actually increased the range of students that are in Course One in grade six, Course Two in grade seven, and obviously in pre-algebra in grade eight. By the same token, our initiative was to try to include increasing the number of students who would be taking algebra. And you'll see in our, our results here in a minute, what we, what we came up with. But again, these are the results by math course. And you can see that grade seven and grade six were common unit assessments. And again, grade eight was the second semester. Additional accomplishments, as we went through this, this process, again, creating the common assessments aligned with the state standards has been a very big initiative for us. It's been two and a half years that we have been learning and understanding, and breaking down the state standards into their component parts, having teachers write instructional targets, matching those instructional targets with instruction, developing formative assessments to guide instruction along the way, and then develop summative assessments to determine what students had, had learned as a result of the instruction. So, creating these common assessments has been a very, very big piece of what we've been doing, and has been, it takes, it takes a long time. And we are very willing to say that these are quality assessments that our teachers are creating. An additional accomplishment is collaborative planning. That is always a goal, trying to find time for our teachers to collaborate. When you operate under the guise of a guaranteed and viable curriculum, it's important that teachers communicate and collaborate. Especially in the middle school, you know, our house setup, basically they're mini schools, so to speak, at each grade level. Having a guaranteed and viable curriculum is very, very important to us. So, having collaborative time is really important. And the collaborative time I'm speaking of is that, for example, the science teacher in the Raider Blue House, and the science teacher in the Raider White House, and the science teacher in Excalibur, have the opportunity to get together to make sure that all of our sixth-grade science students are receiving the same, the same instruction, the same curriculum. That's, that's an inherent challenge in the system that we have. So, collaborative time at that level is really critical. And we have been able to accomplish that, and I'm very proud of that, that we've been able to do that. We have increased, as a result of the work that was done last, in the last couple of years, and the results that we got this year, we have increased the algebra sections. And in every house in eighth grade, there was one algebra section, which meant three sections of algebra being taught at the middle school every year. We have doubled that. We are now offering two sections of algebra in every house, which we think is a significant step forward. It raises the bar of expectation for, for all of our, all of our students. So, we've gone from three to six sections for this upcoming year. And in the process of examining our results and examining the instruction, we've been able to identify needed improvements in certain areas in math. For example, grade six, after having examined the results in Course Two, they found that they could spend, they need to spend more time with exponents, factors, and fractions. So, they've been able to now zero in, bore down a little deeper into what we specifically need to do. Sixth grade this, this year will be focusing, I think their SMART goal is going to be focusing on Math Standard A, Mathematical Processes. And this is the information that they've been able to, to distill and come up with an area for focus. Barriers that we've had to overcome, one of them is to articulate instructional responsibilities for each course to achieve. So, that, again, this plugs into the guaranteed curriculum, but for every teacher to know, these are their responsibilities with each of the courses that they teach. Parallel to that is being able to break down the standards into their component parts, so that they can create instructional targets. And this is an ongoing, it's an ongoing process, of course. And then, we have to achieve the proficiency standard that we are, that we're looking for in each of those areas. Again, time for collaboration is a barrier to overcome. We think we have come up with a solution to that. And instructional interventions, and you heard Ed talk about interventions a little bit, and that, and that is really a very critical step in the entire process. Finding those places at which we can intervene, reading the signs that suggest that an intervention is necessary, and developing those instructional interventions are really important. Addressing barriers as far as the future is concerned, again, we need to assign specific components of each standard to individual courses. And the reason is very simple, not every course covers all of the math standards. So, there are certain ones that, as math progresses from sixth to seventh, eighth grade, there are certain ones that need to be incorporated into each grade level as we move forward. And establish, again, the meeting time for teachers, we have done that. And formalize instructional interventions. We have one piece of that in place now at the middle school, it's called the Success Center. Students are recommended by teachers to participate in the Success Center. We do that. There is a committee that reviews. We work through that on a more intimate level. We don't put a lot of students in the Success Center at one time. Therefore, we think we get, you know, much better results, because it's more intimate instruction. And we are beginning to process the system of interventions. What does a teacher do in the classroom? What does a team of teachers do collaboratively? And what does the building or the system provide, you know, beyond that? And the Success Center, for example, would be that third, that third level. So, teachers provide interventions, teachers collaboratively, the houses, the teams provide interventions, and then we provide interventions building-wise. Any questions?
I, I have a question.
Sure.
You, about your, the collaborative time for teachers. I understand that you were really creative in coming up with a, a way to do that. And I just wondered what that was.
Well, very quickly, we, we worked on a really simple premise. We didn't think it was appropriate to pay teachers to work outside of the school day, on something that was focused on what they, was very important to them during the school day. What we were trying to do is reinvent time that we had, you know, between seven-thirty and two-thirty, to reinvent some time. And one of the things we have done, we have hired, and thank you for approving that, by the way, three educational, regular educational assistants who will during teachers' PATs, their personal their personal assistance time, one time a week, they will go in, let's say on Monday. And in each of the sixth grade houses, one of the educational assistants will go in to science period one on Monday, okay? Those science teachers then are able to be released from that particular duty for one period. So once a week, they will have the opportunity to get together and do collaborative planning. And we just tried to look for a way that we could do it within the system that we had, and this turned out to be the answer.
Wonderful.
Next is Amy Hamborg, EP Rock Elementary.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share our success. We're excited. It feels like we're already planning for next year, but it's a great opportunity to share what we did last year. And it was a great year at EP Rock. As many of you know, we had some challenges, and at the same time, I think that probably raised the bar. Teachers worked harder, students worked harder, and we celebrated the next two slides at the end of last year with our students and our staff. The first target we had was for our K-2 learners that seventy-nine percent would be reading at or above grade level. And if you remember our presentation, I tried to make that understandable because we have a big building. We had about a hundred students at every grade level. We went from our baseline of seventy-five, we went up four percent. We aimed for seventy-nine, which meant four percent of, you know, a hundred students. So it was real understandable. At most of those grade levels, we had four classrooms. So it was understandable to the teachers and hopefully to the board members as we thought about our goal. Our end of the year result was eighty-five percent, and we were really delighted with that result. In grades three through five, as you recall, we used our MAP test. And one of the things I explained about that is when we used our MAP test, it measured growth. It measured growth for all students. It wasn't aimed at just students reading below grade level. We wanted to make sure and ensure that all of our students were growing and learning. So the baseline was fifty-five percent, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it's a very standard number compared to national results for the MAP testing. But we aimed again at raising that four percent, and we achieved sixty-two point three percent. So again, we were delighted. In some of our classes, it went as high as eighty, eighty-one percent. So we were really, you could individually see the growth that a lot of our students made in grades three through five. Additional accomplishments, I think besides having a week-long fire and recovering from that very quickly, we celebrated at the end of the year that ninety-five percent of our kindergarteners were reading at or above grade level. And that was even higher than the year before, which was, I think, eighty-nine percent in kindergarten. So that's very few out of, we had a hundred and, almost a hundred and twenty kindergarteners. So there's very few going on to first grade that are not right at grade level. And in fourth grade, this is a result that was kind of debatable. However, our building has focused on reading and language arts, and we've done a lot in the area of writing. So our fourth grade students are the only grade that are tested on the WKCE in writing. And so we have twenty-eight percent of the district's fourth graders at EP Rock. And when we looked at the number of students across the district who scored at the advanced or proficient level on the WKCE, we had forty-three percent of the district's fourth graders scoring at that level. So that was, we celebrated that with our fourth grade teachers. We continue to be challenged by meeting the needs of all of our diverse learners. One of the challenges we have next year at Rock is four hundred and thirty students, which is a wonderful thing, but half of those students will be new. So we need to continue to do what we are doing at Rock, and we have wonderful, creative, imaginative teachers. And we just need to keep doing what we're doing and address the needs of all those students with diverse learning needs. We'll continue to use best practices. Some of the creative things we've started, we'll continue to do. And one of the new things we're going to do is really target some of our four-year-old learners by looking to bring the children in with their parents prior to kindergarten and do some early intervention with their parents and with the students prior to entering kindergarten. Thank you.
Next, we have Susie Prather, new principal of Hudson Prairie.
Good evening. I'm going to share with you the SMART goal results, and I had the opportunity to meet with my SMART goal team to really get a firsthand feel of the process that went on at Hudson Prairie last year. And what our SMART goal was involving our students in grades one through five. And the assessments that we used was the DRA for our primary students, K through two, and the MAP assessment, which is similar to a lot of the other schools, for three through five. Our target was, we wanted a four percent increase from our baseline, so we wanted seventy-seven percent of our students in grades one through five to be at or above grade level. Our baseline, as you can see in oh-six, oh-seven, was at seventy-three, so we wanted that four percent increase, and we made a one percent increase with the seventy-four percent. So we did not make our SMART goal. Some of the accomplishments that were shared with me by my SMART goal team, first of all, they began a Trailblazers Club, which is an after-school club focusing and targeting those students that were reading below grade level. And it's small group instruction, reading books at their level, and really giving that focused instruction for those students. Another accomplishment that we had is second grade piloted Passport for Reading Initiative, and this is being shared at the Summer Academy. And what this initiative is, is to have a whole grade level look at their reading needs and to have all of the kids grouped at their reading level using all of the resources available in the school. So that's something that second grade is doing and will continue on a broader base this year. Some of the barriers that my team felt that we needed to work on is, first of all, finding that time for collaboration and practice looking at data. We're still in those early stages of really looking at data and developing some interventions to meet those students' needs. Some other barriers is really finding what are those research-based interventions for all kids? And what are the interventions that we can use in our classroom, school-wide, and individually? So we're really working on that. And then another barrier that we need to do is increase family involvement in the SMART goal process. So we have some initiatives planned to really help with that parent communication on where we're at with our parent group and with conferences as well. Some ways to address the barriers, we're going to implement a structured weekly time for us to collaborate, looking at data, looking at interventions, and seeing how it's worked. So we have that structure built one day a week for all of our grade level teams. Really working at research-based interventions to be using, and using our reading coaches and literacy coaches to help us with some of those research-based interventions, so utilizing that better. Also, consistently communicating to parents, what is the reading level they're at, what are we doing at school, and what can you do as parents to help your students move ahead? So kind of that education piece and that clear communication is something that we are going to do as a SMART goal team and as a school. And again, my job is to monitor that progress and really see where our kids are. And I do believe with this structure, we can get our kids and accomplish that SMART goal. Thank you.
Next, Ann Mitchell, Holton Principal.
Good evening. Again, we're kindergarten through fifth grade, one of the small schools, but powerful. We had an aggressive target of ninety percent of the students reading at or above grade level. I was a little trepidatious about this coming into the system, thinking, whoa, this is aggressive. But pleasantly, not surprised, but pleasantly gratified by the work that the staff put into the school through the year. Our spring 2007 scores showed a seventy-eight percent baseline. And from seventy-eight to ninety seemed rather aggressive, but I didn't know what we were capable of at that point. Our results in June of 2008 show an eighty-five percent accomplishment level for our students reading at or above grade level. So we didn't reach our ninety percent target, but we're getting closer. Additional accomplishments, ninety-two percent of our kindergarteners are reading at or above grade level going into first grade. And that, I think, was made partially responsible by the efforts of our literacy coaches in implementing and piloting a Literacy Connection program at Holton and North Hudson. They train volunteers in specific reading instruction strategies, most of whom are parents, to work with students on a regular scheduled basis. And the teacher has materials prepared in the classroom, and then the parent gives feedback to the teacher on the progress that the student's making, and then the techniques might change as the child progresses. And we do think that that impacted that ninety-two percent and some of our other students' improvements. The barriers that we still need to overcome really, I think, are in the upper grades, the three through five. Two through five I put in there because we didn't have Literacy Connection in second grade, and though they were, their statistic was eighty-seven percent accomplishment to the SMART goal, I think that it would be even stronger if we could implement something like Literacy Connection or what the literacy coaches are working on in the upper grades, three through five. To address the barriers, we actually, at the end of the last year, met with our SMART team and brainstormed all the interventions that were being utilized at every grade level. And as a staff, we were pleased with having that checklist to kind of see, if I've got five kids that are still reading below grade level, which of these have I already done and which have I not tried yet? Whether it's a parent reading monitor log or whatever it is. We're working on that intervention list. It's already developed, but we're adding to it as we go. Similar to EP Rock and Prairie, we're looking at the common set of research-based best practices, and our literacy coaches have already been working with our team, our SMART team, to prepare for this year's SMART goal. And collaborative teacher planning has been implemented in our schedule for the coming year. There's some common time where the specialists are back-to-back, and they have a half hour or at lunch, there's a half hour in the middle of their block to do some common planning. And then the monitoring data, I'm excited about the six elementary schools working together on a plan to have some target dates and some target points to share with teachers. In fact, I met with the SMART team yesterday just to look ahead to this year's, and they were very pleased with the timeline. It's kind of nice to see a timeline, they said, instead of wondering what's coming next. So we're excited about that implementation this year at all grade levels.
Next, Dolph Schmidt, Principal, North Hudson.
Again, I want to reiterate the fact that we're able to come in front of you. We've had a lot of success to talk with our students and our teachers, but it's nice that we can bring the success that we've had this year and let you know about it, too. At North Hudson, we framed it a little differently for staff, but I'll also kind of frame it so it's similar to baselines that other principals have talked about today. But we use the DRA and the FANNES and PENNEL. And just to give you a little information about that, that is a one-on-one, both of those are one-on-one tests given to students, and you can gather a lot of information from it as far as their fluency, errors that they're making while reading, but also how they're comprehending. And by sitting down one-on-one with your students, you really know well the problems that they're having and the successes that they're having with reading and reading comprehension. But in our building, we looked at below-grade level readers, and we had a hundred and seventeen students after using the DRA and FANNES-PENNEL who were reading below grade level. And to give you an idea, last year, we had four hundred and seventy-five students, so that was about, seventy-five percent of our students were reading at or above grade level. But we focused on the hundred and seventeen that weren't. And we really looked at it classroom by classroom, and thirty percent of that students, actually that's a typo, would have been about thirty-five of those a hundred and seventeen. So we thought it would be reasonable to get thirty-five of those students to grade level by the end of the year. And really, that was a little bit more than one student per grade level. And so we looked at it personally that way, so staff really felt, you know, we can move one, we can move two children, you know, in our classroom after we've assessed them and get them to grade level. So that's kind of how we looked at it. But again, our baseline to start with was we had seventy-five percent of students at North Hudson reading at or above grade level. Our baseline data, we were shooting to get that thirty percent, and we ended up moving fifty-two of those students. So we were able to move forty-four percent of the students that were reading below grade level at the beginning of the year to get them at or above grade level. So looking at the whole building, we were able to raise our students to eighty-six percent of the students in our building to be reading at or above grade level, which was just wonderful. So I wanted to give you that perspective, even though at our building, we're really focusing on moving the children that were below grade level. Some additional accomplishments, kindergarten was able to do similar on, they assessed much later than the year, obviously, and they were able to get eighty-seven percent of all kindergarteners, kindergarteners either at or above grade level for kindergarten. All students made progress. I mean, there's a lot of students that we're not counting that were way below grade level to start the year and were much closer at the end. Or we had students that were above grade level to start the year and were farther above. Or we had students that were just continuing to be at grade level, whether it was where they should be at the beginning, middle, or the end. And those are some things that don't really show up in our data. And we also implemented a system to monitor students. Each grade level had what we coined a net, and so at the start of the year, they plugged in their students, they had the shaded area with, they knew in September was at grade level, and that moved because obviously, in the middle of the year, they'd be reading at a higher grade level and at the end of the year. But it was a way for staff to know personally, okay, I have this many students that were below grade level, this many students at, and this many students above. And so that worked really well to monitor. We also used that collaboratively at grade levels because it was one grade level sheet so they could look, okay, these are the students that we have at grade level that haven't moved, or these are students that were trying some things, and being able to collaborate and talk about best practices to move them. It also gave us information about children that weren't moving, and so we had to try some other interventions. But that was something that was really successful as far as being able to monitor where students were at. Some barriers to overcome was finding and using a common kindergarten assessment. The kindergarten team was a part of all of our discussions to work on moving children, but they didn't assess their readers until, some of them, who they knew were reading midway through the year, and then all their students at the end of the year. So we really didn't have data that we could use with them right away, and it had a feeling of leaving them out of the process. And so that's something that we're looking at, and I'll talk about that when we address barriers, but that was one thing that we wanted to look at. And then we were assessing three times a year. We were assessing in September, we were assessing in February, I believe, and then we were assessing again in May. But we didn't have any monthly assessments, so we couldn't monitor as quickly and make adjustments as quickly to know exactly where children were at at different points in the year. So that was another barrier that we wanted to take a look at. So one of the ways that we're addressing, as far as the first barrier, is we're going to try the DIBELS this year, which can give us information on kindergarteners' pre-writing skills. And so we'll be using that to have some data with the kindergarteners, too. And we want to allow time in the schedule to collaborate. And one of the things that we were able to do for this fall is get a half-hour block on our day one schedule right away in the morning. And staff already have a time where they meet K-teachers, meet with fifth-grade teachers to have some time for students to read together, to partner read. And on one of those day ones, the kindergarten teachers will be leading that partner read while the fifth-grade teachers, for example, will have time to plan, so they can come in at eight o'clock, and they can plan, and they can collaborate until nine thirty-five. So it gives them a little extra time, doesn't cost the district any more money, but it gives them time within their day to collaborate and meet. The other nice piece of that day one is the day that we have both of our literacy coaches in the building to add support, both the K-2 literacy coach and the 3-5. So we're excited about that. And that kind of flows into the second way to address barriers is that we can use their expertise as far as guiding questions to talk about best practices to move students forward in interventions. But I wanted just to end with the fact that this had been a really powerful experience in my building. At times, it's nerve-wracking when you look at students that are below grade level, and there's a lot of pressure there to move them. It becomes personal. It's your students, and that's why it's nice to be able to track this way, too, because by grade level, by classroom, those are students that you're accountable for. And so there is pressure to move them. But by the end, students felt, teachers, I should say, felt very motivated and empowered by being able to move students, to have success, to really have data behind the work that they were doing to show that what they're doing matters. And we know the most recent research says that teachers have the biggest influence as far as having students having success. So the data was really powerful in the end. It was, at times, it was a bumpy journey this year, but we're on the right path, and we had some good gains. So thank you again for allowing me to share what we did at North Hudson.
And certainly, last but not least, our new principal at Willow River, Dave Grambo.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me share our exciting
Good evening. Thank you for letting me share our exciting growth. We divided our SMART goals into three different categories, that being kindergarten, and then first and second grade together, and then third through fifth together. So, taking a look at kindergarten, you can see that the assessment tool used was a curriculum-based district-wide assessment that had been used up until that point at reporting time, so at the trimester time, but then it was developed and, and revamped a little bit to be used to gather some baseline data. With that, the target was set at eighty percent of kindergarten students in receiving Title I services will recognize capital and lowercase letters and the associated sounds. Now, that's one of the pieces of information that comes out of that assessment. You can see down below in the results, what we're dealing with there, ten of the thirteen students that were identified essentially reached that goal, which is seventy-seven percent. So, it, you, you may notice there that there's no baseline listed, and that is, it's a function of the numbers. Really, what we're talking about is we took the thirteen kids that were identified, so really, the baseline was zero of those thirteen had that skill in place. They moved to a point where ten of those thirteen had that skill in place by the time they were done and ready for the final measurement. So, that's a quick look at kindergarten. With grades one and two, similar to most of the other schools, the DRA was used, and a target was set that eighty percent of the students in grades one and two will be at or above grade level in reading based on the comparison of their Fall to Spring DRA scores. You can see the results were that ninety-five out of one hundred and thirty-six, or seventy percent of the students taking the spring DRA, were at or above grade level. So, we fell a little short of our goal and have some work to do there. In groups, they're grades three through five, rather, we use the NWEA MAP test, and the target was that fifty percent of the students in grades three through five will achieve their targeted spring RIT reading score. And what that means there, that, that number can be a little bit confusing because now we're looking at fifty percent, but that's fifty percent of the students will reach their targeted growth. We are not saying that we want fifty percent of our students at grade level. That number would be much higher. We're talking about, the, the way this test works, it, upon taking the first test, it will identify a target of growth, and that target is set higher the lower the students' scores. So, we wanted fifty percent to reach their target, and based on the statistics and the data, looking at that MAP score, that was a reasonable number. You can see that for our results, we had thirty-one of those fifty-two students reaching that goal, so sixty percent met their targeted spring RIT reading scores. Some additional accomplishments, this was the exciting part for me. Going through, being new to the process at Willow River, it was fun for me to really delve into the information, get a feel for the hard work that was done in the past, and get some ideas as, as far as, as to how we can move forward. And some of those additional accomplishments, we established practices that allow for, allowed, established practices, rather, that allowed for small group instruction for the students in need. That was a real exciting process they had at Willow River last year, where the students in need were meeting one-on-one with professionals in the building, as well as some volunteers, to get some extra time for that reading to help, help bolster those skills. We also enhanced the capacity for collaboration amongst the staff members. This is the piece that is near and dear to my heart. The collaboration piece is essential for the staff to move forward, and then in turn, to have the students turn, or move forward. And through this process, they learned ways to collaborate and ways to connect to the skills they needed to, to address and enhance to help the students. Another additional accomplishment there is setting the foundation for the development of professional learning community, and we've talked about that term a little bit. It, the, the SMART team, the team that specifically works on setting these goals and gathering the data and really driving this process, really, they, they moved to a point where they learned how to work together at a different level. They learned how to be able to question one another and take those questions and turn that into progress, and, and, and again, move the learning forward. Some barriers to overcome, we found that we had a need to disaggregate the data, and what I mean by that is to look at groups of students, so we can say, well, this group of students really isn't making the progress we would like. What do we need to do to make sure that each of these individual groups, however we divide them out, is making the progress, and in turn, all the students can benefit from that? We found that the data collection from several different sources was a bit cumbersome. You'll notice that it was a different data source for kindergarten, first and second, third through fifth. That was a little bit cumbersome, and it made for difficult comparisons between those grades, so we could make sure that we're all moving. And again, the structures within the school day, and I think every, every teacher meant, or every principal, rather, mentioned this, that the teachers need more time to, I shouldn't say more time, a different use of time, to really move the, take the data and turn it into action. Find a way to review the data and make things, make things work so the students can learn as we move forward. Addressing some of those barriers, we have a student data disaggregation project, project that's going to take place this summer. We started already, working on some tools and some strategies to help take a look at that data across several groups, so we can make sure that we're reaching all the students, not leaving anyone behind. And we're going to focus the data source across the grade levels to the DRA and the FONAS and PANEL to overcome that cumbersome nature. So, we'll be using just those two, and they're very similar assessments. We'll be using those across all grade levels. And again, we talked about developing a repertoire of the best practice interventions, and that's something that I'm sure we'll all be working on as principals together. And creating systems and structures within the school day to guide that data collection and the collaboration by the teachers. And those structures can be scheduling structures, as well as meeting structures, and just, just other tools that will help structure that time. Again, we can't make time. More time can't be made, but we need to come up with ways to use it more effectively. Thank you very much.
At the district level as well, there are some system pieces that we want to discuss this evening, some barriers we need to overcome. And a lot of these have been mentioned tonight, developing a more ongoing or monthly monitoring system. So, again, there are expectations that every four to six weeks, principals will be sitting down with staff and coming up with ways to do a, a more monitoring going on within their buildings so that they can make some adjustments as needed more times during the school year. Drive that SMART goal into the classroom, so there's a building goal. Can we also now start some grade level goals, and then eventually, some classroom goals as well? And provide principals with change management tools to utilize with their staff as we implement, and we did some of that at our last administrative leadership team meeting. We had someone come in and just talk about the process of change and what to expect as we move staff through that process. And then again, to continue monitoring the effectiveness of our research-based practices and the interventions that we're using. And what we're going to do in Hudson to address some of these barriers, we are going to have some monthly monitoring assessments and systems built into our plans, and the L for L, which is when they meet with our superintendent, Mary, and the principals with their leadership for learning meetings. As I, in July, at our work session, we focused on change, as I mentioned, I'm kind of doubling up here. And our monthly ALT meetings will continue to focus on moving the flywheel, and that phrase comes out of Jim Collins' book, Good to Great. And then, we mentioned earlier, too, that our teacher supervision evaluation system is being created around evidence of student learning. That's another piece that we were working on this year. And then, the principals are really working to devote time during that school day, as many of them mentioned tonight, to examine that data, discuss the interventions, professional development, planning for instruction assessing, and then beginning that whole process again. Peg wanted to leave with this thought this evening. Success means we go to sleep at night knowing that our talents and abilities were used in a way that helped others. And wanting to just stress the point that when we're in the system of education, and we're talking numbers and data and those pieces, in our business, we're talking about children. And so that when we go to sleep at night as administrators that presented this evening, we want to make sure that we're making a difference in the lives of kids, and we are very committed to this continuous improvement process and expect to bring back to you each year even more success stories. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. There's a lot of information there for board members. Any questions, comments? Cindy?
Of course. I have, I have questions and comments, and I'd like to start, Sandy, by saying congratulations. This is, this is the kind of thing, we can clearly see that you are building a, an accountability framework and a structure that is providing exactly the kind of evidence that we've been asking for, to demonstrate the continuous improvement of our students' learning. And I mean, you're spot on, and really, work you should be very proud of. And obviously, you didn't do that by yourself, and, and I want to just congratulate you, too, Peg, because clearly, the, the, did I say the right name? Okay. Peg, thanks. Clearly, in, in every building that, that was represented tonight, you, the impact of, of your work in terms of development of, professional development of our teachers and our administrators toward the goals of evaluating student improvement, it's just evident that, that the work is being done in the buildings. And so, I want to thank you for that, and your learning coaches clearly have had a huge impact. Many of these goals involve the reading of students, and that's so important for all of their, all of their other coursework. And, you know, I just, I'm really pleased with the work. And then, of course, I have a lot of comments for the individual buildings, and, and I, I just want to point out, Mr. Lucas, that your intervention pyramid is, is wonderful. It's something that, that I'd like to hear a lot more about, and obviously, the success in reducing the number of Ds and Fs is important, and, and I'm looking forward to seeing a lot more information about that as you, as your, your continuous improvement progresses, because I just think that it's going to be huge to the importance of our students' education in math. And, Mr. Coke, I just wanted to point out that your collaborative time for teachers was, is really something to be modeled in the district, and I, I hope that other buildings, I hear them saying they want that, and I, I'm hoping that they'll take the same kinds of creative approach to finding that collaborative time in their, in their buildings with their instructors. And, and Amy, I just, for you to overcome the obstacles that you did this year and show the incredible improvements that were made, I, I just, I think that, I think it's really important for us to realize as a district that we, while we are really good, we have so much potential to grow and to, to, to make just huge leaps, and I think that building really shows us that. And I wanted to point out that at Prairie, while Prairie didn't make significant improvements at all in their targeted areas, there is new leadership in that building this year, and, and it sounds to me like that leadership has already jumped on that, that program, and is, is really beginning to implement the same kinds of things that we've seen successful in other buildings. And so, I'm looking forward to seeing some huge gains. And I, I think that I wanted to point out that some of the other buildings, North Hudson and Willow, took a completely different, looked through a different window to set their goals. While some of the buildings were saying, you know, we want to have such a percentage of at or above reading, they really looked at the same kind of goal, but from a different angle. And I think we need to, as a district, really point out that I think that demonstrates how much individual differences were, were honored at the various buildings, and the amount of individual differences that we have in our leadership team and how we think and approach problems. Our, our district has to benefit from having multiple perspectives, and, and I think that was just a really excellent demonstration. I, I think it's really important that it does matter what teachers do, and I think that when Mr. Schmidt said that, I think that it really underscores the importance, Mary, of your efforts to attract and retain stars in the district. I think it really points so specifically to our need to do exactly as you've been telling us, and, and we've heard many times this year, the efforts that we make to bring in really high-quality leadership, and to retain that leadership in our district, and to, to build those, those capacities. And we just have to do it right from the, I mean, right at the beginning, in terms of how we attract and retain. So, I think we need to really recognize as a board the evidence that we have for a lot of Mary's requests for high quality. And then, I just, just two other things that I just want to say really quickly. Obviously, there have been huge, huge amounts of construction of infrastructure across the system. We can see in every building that the first thing that had to be done is exactly what Mary and Sandy have been telling us. We have to build the infrastructure before we're really going to be able to talk about the, the data and the improvements. And then, obviously, we've seen that that infrastructure goal has been hit really hard by the district this year. This is all new in the last, you know, twelve to sixteen months, and I think that's, really speaks to the amount of work that's been done by our teachers, as well as our building administrators and our district. I think it takes a very integrated perception of, of what the district is trying to accomplish at all levels to achieve that. And I just want to give you a real huge congratulations for achieving something that's really district, I mean, difficult. We've, we, we can watch a school being built, but you've done the same kind of heavy lifting and the same kind of construction in our infrastructure across the district, and we need to recognize that. And then finally, such huge gains, I mean, when, when we're making increases of ten percent and, and more, that came kind of, I mean, I'm not, not to belittle the amount of work, but that was pretty easy, you know? We put in a year and saw a huge amount of, of, of increase and a huge amount of advancement, and I just wanted to remind the community, and, as well as the buildings, that the closer we get to those high numbers, those high points, the more difficult it's going to be to achieve small increments of gain. But that doesn't mean that we're not working as hard, or that those small increments are less important than these huge jumps. In fact, those are really, really valuable. So, as next year's data comes around and we see that maybe somebody who made a ten percent increase this year makes a five or six percent increase next year, or smaller, I don't think that we should think that that is less of an increase. It's actually much more difficult and much harder as you get toward the upper end of that. And then, I think just finally, it's okay with me, it's really okay with me that we set aggressive goals in the way that Holton did, that maybe take us more than a year to achieve. And I think that when we see that the goal didn't get met, but progress, significant progress was made, more progress than probably would have been made without, without a goal at all, I think that we have to be willing to support those aggressive goals and, and see that, for what it's worth, it takes a couple of years for us to get there. So, everybody, I think, was just really, I'm very proud of this district, every building, every building, every leader, every teacher. It's just amazing. Thanks, you guys, for everything. You make it a joy to be on this board.
Thanks, Cindy. Other board members, comments, questions?
I just got a couple. I don't think I can top that, though.
Sorry.
Excuse me, that's very, that's very good, Cindy. Apologize for my voice. It's scratchy here. Too much yelling today. First of all, to all of yous, I can't, I can't see. Congratulations to those principals that met their goal, and to tag along with what Cindy said to those of you that, that fell, fell somewhat short. I think, you know, I think that's to be expected. When ambitious goals are set, you know, sometimes they won't be met. And there's, there's, excuse me, no harm in that, in, in reaching for an ambitious goal. You know, I was always taught there's, there's no failure in getting knocked down. It's, the problem is when you don't get back up again. So, to those of you that, again, be striving for those goals next year, I wish you luck and continued success for those other schools. Great report tonight. Thanks.
Sandy, I also have a question, and that has to do with the underlying data. So, it is a huge part of how all the buildings determined their SMART goals and established baselines and did the measurements that show the great results that we have had in the past year. With a lot of the students at the elementary level moving from one building to the next, can you talk a little bit about some of the conversations you've had about how do we recast the data for each of the buildings now that they have an entirely different population of students?
Actually, now it's easier than in June. We were trying to come up with where the scores ended, and then looking forward to the oh-eight, oh-nine school year, because the, in our system, we have the Skyward Student Management System, and in there, there is an area for data where we are able to put in, and this is just recently in the last year, but we are putting in those DRA and F and P scores into the system. So, it was just a matter of getting them in from Excel from the schools into the system. But our trick becomes is we couldn't flip them to the six schools until July one, when we, when, when our system changes. So, we had literally kind of, in essence, kind of override the system and just do it through Excel and figure out, student by student, who was going to what school, and then, and then reorganize the data and give that to the principals as they started in the data workshop in June to look at the next year's goals, which you'll be seeing in, I believe, October. So, anyway, our, we're trying now to create a system where we do have the scores in a district-wide database so that we can be able to access and move those scores around.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. I have just one, maybe two questions. And I apologize if you've addressed this already, but in terms of setting these targets at each individual school and the teams at those individual schools, what is the role of your team in, in sort of looking at those targets and working with individual schools in setting those?
I think you heard a little bit from it tonight. I think we've all learned some pieces about what kind of stretch goal we can expect to see from different pieces, dealing with maybe larger see from different pieces, dealing with maybe larger grade-level goals versus, I want to point out like the one at Willow where we targeted just the Title I students in kindergarten. We're talking about a very small population and maybe that wasn't our smartest move. I mean, we're just kind of learning what might be some better goals, other pieces to work. The other piece would be that we support, especially with our literacy coaches. And so we'll continue with the professional development piece as well, with the reading and writing workshop, continuing the training piece. And then I'll be working, Peg and I both sit down with the principals and we discuss things with reading interventions. I work with the reading specialists who also will be kind of shifting their position this year to provide more support with that reading intervention piece as well. And then sitting with the principals, some of the elementary issues with that collaboration time really is the elementary schedule. And so that's one of our priorities this year, to look at the elementary schedule and how can we work in more collaboration time into that piece.
Okay, good. Anything else? Thanks, principals, for taking the time out of your evening to provide these reports.
I would like to add a brief comment. Surely Cindy talked about leadership. And I started our administrative leadership team by saying leadership matters. And you have set, essentially seen that tonight. Certainly, the leaders that are in front of you have pushed these goals forward and helped more of our students to be successful. They have worked with teams of teacher leaders. And so leadership matters not only at the administrative level but at the teacher level as well. And it, it works right into the classroom where the teacher who works with those students every day is the leader for learning right there. And I really compliment them for essentially working through a process and we're building it as we go. The infrastructure, as Cindy talked about, isn't complete. It will take us a number of years to get that in place. And we could have waited to implement SMART goals prior, for that time period. The thing is, our students wouldn't benefit. And right now, we see results where students have benefited because leadership does matter. And I appreciate all the work that our principals have done to help those students be successful, and they'll continue to do that. So thank you for your support, too.
Thanks, Mary. We'll move on. Thanks, Sandy. To the financial segment of the meeting, Tim's going to give us a report on the end of the fiscal year, financials, as well as, just give us an early taste of the preliminary budget, which is going to, it's a sort of a starting point for us. You know, that's going to evolve as we go into the next few months and we get more good information, data to feed into that. So, Tim?
All right, thank you. As Dan mentioned, when we get onto the budget piece, those are numbers. One thing we can guarantee is the numbers will change as we move through the process. But first off, if you would look as a loose leaf handout at your table, 2007, 2008 budget update through June 30. And these numbers are as close to final as we can get at this point. We do have the audit starting next week, and so there may be adjustments as we go through that. But right now, the numbers, if you turn to page one, on the inside, we've got a summary by fund of the expenditures and the budget expenditures and the year-to-date expenditures through the end of the year. And so for the general fund, which is Fund 10, the first line, we had $49,372 budgeted. The year-to-date expenditures are $48,782, so about 98.81% of that budget was expended. And you can see the history going along for 2007 and 2006 on that right-hand side as to where the budget wound up for those two years. Fund 21 is grants, mainly educational foundation grants to the district. And you can see we budgeted 107 and receives slightly below that 70,000. That, that budget is a little bit harder to predict, more of not internal factors but external factors as far as the, the grants that are received throughout the year. Fund 27 is a special education fund. And one piece about that is important to remember that the special education fund and the general fund are tied together. What happens, there's, there's three major funding pieces for special education. There's a federal grant, there's state aid, and then there's also the piece that doesn't cover the rest of that is general fund expenditures. So those revenues from the general fund amount to around $5 million, and you'll see that as we go through. Debt service is all of the voter, voter-approved bond issues and all of the debt service on those bond issues dating back to various buildings and various large projects. Fund 49, which is a building fund, and that holds the Rivercrest construction costs. And Fund 50 is food service. And Fund 72, the expendable trust fund, those are scholarships for our students. And again, more of external factors of what individuals or companies may donate to scholarships for, for our students there. So we have Fund 73 is the employee trust, employee benefit trust fund. That's our other post-employment benefits that we've been talking about for a number of years. And we, we continue to fund that fully at the annual required contribution. We're also having an updated study that we need to have done on that to determine if our funding is adequate or not, if it needs to increase or decrease. And Fund 80 is a community service. Those are mainly adult programs, adult community service, community education programs. Fund 81's extended daycare, that's school-age care, at each of the sites during the school year. And then during the summer, we've got the two sites at Willow River and Hudson Prairie. And then the Fund 95 is, is the vocational education co-op. That particular fund is a collaboration between a couple of other school districts. And then you'll see later when we move on to the budget that it also includes WITC Avenue Richmond for a certified nursing assistant program. And the expenditures and the revenues of that fund are cost-neutral. What we get in revenue, we spend an equal amount in expenditures. So that fund zeroes out each year, so costs and expenditures are equal. Okay, so if we go to the next page, you can see there, we've got graphs going across the three different years. And I won't get into a lot of detail there. But you can also see by major object account, the graph, the bar, the bar graph at the bottom. And you can see again, all three years, again, how we measure. If you go to, continue on to page three. We look at expenses by major object for the general fund. And you can see the var, the variances there. Non-capital items came in slightly higher than budget. We had some additional textbooks and software that were purchased mainly in those categories. Capital projects, capital objects, rather, are slightly higher. We started an initiative, IT department started an initiative to do virtual servers. And so a portion of that cost was, was rolled into this year's budget. And then, other than that, unless there are questions, please feel free to ask along the way if you see anything that you have a question on. Page four, again, breaks the expenditures down in some additional detail, and I won't go into each line item there. And just rolling on to revenue by fund, again, looking at revenues, the general fund was just about right on for revenue at 100.55%. The, we had a little additional interest income in debt service, which is Fund 39. Fund 49, additional interest income there. And school-age care was up over, over our projected revenue. And that kind of sums up the revenue side for all of the funds. And then again, on the back page, the last page, you can see there are the breakdowns of the, of the revenue by account, and that's for the general fund. Any questions on that? If you don't have any now, please feel free to contact me if you come up with them later.
I actually have a question. Tim, can you tell me what the operating transfers out are?
Oh, sure, it's a good question.
Refresh my memory.
Yeah, operating transfers out, and I'll, I'll probably, I'll direct you to page four, or actually, page five. If you go down to, towards the bottom, you'll see bold heading, capital heading, operating transfers out. Most of what that is, is the portion that the general fund covers for special education. So that would be the, like the net after we subtract out our federal and special, or federal and state funding for special education.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question.
Cindy?
On page four, in expenses by object, on the first section, the fourth line, certified staff, sick leave subs. I understand that we spent 131% of what we expected, what we budgeted?
That, that would have been in 63006.
Okay.
But if you look, yeah, if we look at 63008, it was about 108.
I get it, okay. So we've actually reduced the amount of sick leave, the percentage of, of expected budget that's being used for sick leave?
Right, over time, that's, that's been, the budget's been adjusted, expenses have been adjusted. We do use a formula to figure that out, and we probably need to tweak that a little bit on that formula.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Tim, do you want to move on to the preliminary budget, please?
Sure. Okay, next, the next item is the multiple-page preliminary budget. And it is just that, at this point, it's preliminary. Keeping in mind, if you look under the, that first page where the budget assumptions are, the numbers are certainly subject to change because we'll go up into October until we have final district valuation on, on real estate. Those numbers do not get certified by the Department of Revenue until October. So those could change, they usually do change, sometimes they change more than others. And the Department of Public Instruction also will have, they have estimates for us at this point. As they continue to collect data from districts statewide, their numbers can change. And internally here in the district, as we go along, we may, we're always gathering pieces of information, so we will make adjustments to our adjustments and different assumptions as we go. So just please keep in mind that this, what you see now was very preliminary. One of the things that we do, we have included in this budget is the city TIF District Number Four is, has been terminated. And when that's terminated, the, from the defeasance of the bonds, the city, the county, school district, et cetera, those, those in that district receive a portion, a one-time shot of revenue. And so we have budgeted $800,000. And that's just for, just for this year. And that is included in the budget. And in addition to that, when the TIF District is released, when we do our calculations, we do what's called tax increment financing valuation out, so it's not included. So now we have the district, district coming due, and that's roughly a valuation of about $190 million. And so at this point, though, because of the timing of the release of that, I had talked to the Department of Revenue to find out when we would be realizing that increase, and it won't be until the '09, '10 school year budget. So we did not include that $190 million in the valuation as we get, go forward through the budget here. Expenditures of $1.3 million will be taken from fund balance for the final portion of Rivercrest Elementary. If you remember, the board authorized $3.5 million to be taken out of fund balance for the construction of, of the school. In addition, fund balance in this budget, we have fund balance of $500,000 to be used for general fund operations. And we'll get to that point, we've got a report there that we'll go through quickly. The budget include, this budget includes all staffing and operations for Rivercrest. And, and that includes, you know, all of the staff that we had budgeted previously, developed budgets for, the building staff such as principal, office staff, custodians, media center staff, all of the different types of site-related costs. Then, of course, there are the teachers, and those are, those have been transferred from other schools, obviously, and, and some new additions added, depending on class size guidelines, et cetera. Student growth is kept, for purposes of this, is kept mostly flat for '08, '09. Okay, so with those assumptions, on the next page, we've got the general fund. And that, again, very similar report to the one that you looked at for the end of the, end of this past year. And just giving breakdowns on our revenue, you can see that local property tax is up. Part of that is due to our negative tertiary aid. We're back into a negative tertiary aid situation where last year was one of, was one year where we didn't have it. Three, four years prior to that, we've always had negative tertiary aid. And what that means is, is district valuation, if it's higher per member than statewide averages, what it does is it, it shifts revenue, it somewhat penalizes a property-rich district, and it shifts revenue away from state aid and onto the tax levy. So it, it's something the state uses to help level the playing field between school districts and property valuation in those districts. But our revenue from the local sources, you can see, is going up, we're projecting about 10.82%. And I'm just probably, I'm going to hit the highlights here, really. If you go to about the middle of the page, you can see our state equalization aid, which is Number 10R621, and that's our state aid, has gone up only slightly from $24,386 to $25,134. And again, that's, that's preliminary. And so if you continue on down towards the, the bottom, just above the total revenue line, you can see $812,325. And so that includes $800,000 of revenue from the TIF District that we'll get this year. So if you look at total revenues, they're increasing overall 8.17%. Moving on to expenditures, you can see it looks like there's a huge increase in administrators. Mainly, that's, what that's due to is, of course, having Rivercrest, so we're adding a principal. And then also, we had, we're reclassifying one of our school managers, who is now a principal. And so he's being reclassed from supervisory area up into administrators. And administrator, supervisory staff, we've got a couple of additions there. Certified staff is just giving, giving our, what our contract settlement was, and then adding, of course, steps. Most teachers qualify for steps if they're not at the top, so they'll move a step. And if they have educational credits, they'll move lanes. So that includes steps and lanes in the $15,760 amount. And then you can see, as we go through, we're projecting about a 12.5% increase in total salaries. And so that includes opening Rivercrest. If you turn, turn to the next page, next page is, is the fringe benefits section.
Tim, could you just clarify? You just said the salaries and opening Rivercrest, and so you talk about what salaries you're talking about.
Oh, sure, yeah. The, the, well, if you're, if you're looking at the $15 million, that's, that's all, that's all teachers. So we, you know, we've certainly transferred teachers from other buildings, but those, those are all the teaching staff. So, but when we looked at, if we look at Rivercrest again, that's really, you know, the budget that we had developed for that did not include teachers, included the people to open up the building. So again, it was media staff, principal, office staff, custodial, those types of positions. And then as we went through, we got closer to the opening, of course, the, the boundaries were redrawn. So then we looked at the So then we looked at the class size guidelines, et cetera, and hiring for those, for those teachers. There's additional, there's some additional teaching staff in that number two as well. Okay, and moving on to the fringe benefits section, we're projecting a seven point eight seven percent increase in the fringe benefits. Purchased services, about thirteen percent. If you look at contracted services, which is the second line down on that category, we do have some planning for some safety and security measures, modifications at EP Rock included in that number. And we've got the various projects that we do. We do roofing projects. Minor renovations are included in that number. If you go down to just about a third of the way down to ten E three forty-one, that's pupil travel. Of course, we are experiencing some fairly high fuel costs, so we are projecting an increase there. And we also have the new contract with Safeway. So that takes into account that new contract and projecting a couple of fuel increases as we look at the fuel escalator clause there. So again, the purchase services is about thirteen percent. Going on to the next section, non-capital objects, that's about one point four nine percent. If you look at the first two lines of that category, supplies, materials up at the top, and computer supplies, a little bit of a flip-flop there. We decided operationally, it's, it works better and more efficient if we move some supplies to the IT department, have them take care of things such as printer cartridges and that type of thing. So we've shifted some of those supplies, out of supplies and materials and down into computer supplies. Let's see, and then the bottom category, capital objects, is down forty-eight percent. And that's to that first line item, building acquisition, three million ten for this past year, includes the administrative service center. We closed on the administrative service center in oh seven, oh eight, and that was one and a half million. And then we also took one and a half million out for Rivercrest construction out of the general fund. So that makes that come out of fund balance. And continuing on to the next page, insurance and judgments, we're seeing a slight decrease there, which is certainly good news, and that's mainly due to our workers' compensation area. We've had, had a high mod rate, which is due to injuries. And we've started some different initiatives there with safety committees and a pre-employment physical for facility staff so that, in attempts to try and decrease that mod rate. So this year, we did, we did experience a decrease in that rate, and that did bring the premium down considerably. Ten E eight twenty-seven below that, and that's the special education funding. And a lot of that increase, again, is just, it has to do with our student ratios. And I know we're, we're quite a bit above, our ratios were, were somewhat above DPI recommendations. And I know Barb did some studies there and looked at River Falls and Menominee. And so some of the hiring there was to decrease those ratios and get them into, into compliance. And also, a lot of that hiring is by law. IEP is in place for those students, and you must meet the requirements of those IEPs. Last, and the final section is other objects. Those are dues and fee, mainly dues and fees. And so when you get down to the bottom, you can see excess of expenditures over revenues. So two million five ninety-one for the year ended, just ended. And then for next, this coming, this year's budget, one point eight million. Now, that shows as, right as it says, expenditures in excess of revenues. And it's shown that way because that's how we get the dollars out of fund balance, where we were authorized to do that for the administrative service center and for Rivercrest. So we have to show them as expenditures, and there's really no corresponding revenue. So that brings the fund balance down. And the, for the budgeted, for the budget year, the one point eight represents one point three million out of Rivercrest. And then again, a half million dollars for general operations. So, any questions?
Yes.
Cindy?
On line three fifty-four in the purchased services. In a time when we are committed to sustainability and also to the use of advanced technology, I'm just, I know they're, relatively speaking, in terms of the total budget, a small number. But I'm a little bit surprised to see the cost, or the budgeted amount for printing and binding nearly doubled. And I just wondered why.
I would have to tell you, on that one, I would probably have to go back and look in at our detail as we've got several accounts that make up that number. And, and of course, you know, we are, one of our initiatives is to decrease the amount of paper usage. One of the things the duplicating department is doing for this year is that everything is going to be printed double-sided, unless it's requested otherwise. So if there's a reason they need single-sided print, it will, it will be done. But we just, we're just going to default to double-sided paper, so we should cut down some of our paper usage.
Well, down on four seventeen, we really aren't budgeting a substantial decrease in the use of paper, in the cost of paper. So I guess I'm, you know, we're, we're doubling the amount of printing and binding, not substantially reducing the amount of money budgeted for paper. And I just, I really think as a district, we should really reconsider that. Look at the detail. I mean, you don't have to justify it right here, but I think it's probably a good idea to really just look at the detail and make sure that's really what we want to do. I think it's a place where, I know it's, we're talking about, you know, relatively small part, part of the budget, but the statement that it makes is, I think, just extremely huge, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
I will take a look at that.
Thanks.
Details, Cindy.
Okay. Is that anything else, Tim?
Okay. I'll just continue on and finish up here in short order. If you go to the next page, the next page is called the revenue limit worksheet. And if you look on that right column, and you go down to line thirteen, thirteen is the allowable limit, is called the allowable limited revenue. And that would be the maximum amount the district could levy for general fund operations. And that's twenty-seven million six sixty-four. If you look at the total limited revenue to be used, which is line fourteen below that, that's the amount that, at this point in the budget, we're projecting to use, which is twenty-two million four oh nine. So when we talk about levying under the cap, we're still under the cap, and in this case, by about five point two million. Yeah, then I will go, we'll go to the next, moving on to the next page, fund balance. If you look at the general fund and we project.
Tim, I just wanted to go back to that for a minute.
Sure.
Will you comment on being under the revenue cap in relationship to other districts in the state, that five million?
Oh, sure.
What that represents?
Yeah, I, I can, I can speak because the data, you know, certainly won't be final for this coming year until next year. But when we looked at data from last year, we're, for the past two years, we've been number one in the state levying under that cap. There is no other district, including districts twice our size and three times our size, that levy an amount as, as much as we're levying under the cap. If we look at, and that's some other additional data that I'd like to bring you. If we look at the total amount that was under-levied statewide, what we under-levy is, is a pretty significant percentage of that total under-levy statewide. So I think that's a, it's good to be, good to be noted.
Wonderful.
Okay, moving on to the next page is a projection of fund balance and looking at, looking at the year that we just wrapped up, and then going forward and looking where we, we could wind up for next year. And you see a general fund balance as of six thirty oh seven was eighteen million one fifty-seven. And we're projecting, we're going to take about two point six million of fund balance out of that. So that will bring it to fifteen million five fifty-seven for the end of this year. We look at use of fund balance for the oh eight, oh nine budget. As I mentioned, we had general operations of five hundred thousand. We plan to take out of fund balance. And then the amount designated for Rivercrest, which is the remaining balance, and that's one point three million. And the, so the estimated general fund balance would be thirteen million seven fifty-seven if we did those proposed items at the bottom here. And that's about twenty-seven percent of our operating expenditures. Board policy is twenty-five to thirty percent of operating expenditures. So we're hitting, hitting around the middle of that. You can see some small lettering there. You put your magnifying glass on it, but it's a little bit small. The amounts previously, previously expended in the general fund for Rivercrest were, in oh six, oh seven, we took seven hundred thousand out of the general fund, and oh seven, oh eight, one point five. And then the, the final portion is the one point three, and that makes up three point five million that we've taken out of, out of general fund.
A general fund or fund balance?
Well, I would say it, it's been, it's general fund. You know, it, because you're, you're mixing operating expenditures with the capital expenditure, depends on where you, where you wind up with your budget year in total. So, but if we look at, for example, if you go back to that final page with the, the total expenditures, that's two, two million five ninety-one. So that represents a decrease in the, in the general fund balance, in the fund balance for the general fund. And that's the, the two point six that you see there. It's just rounded on that page. So that is coming out of fund balance.
So our targeted fund balance is twenty-five to thirty percent?
Yes.
And we're at about twenty-seven percent if we spend everything that's been designated?
That's correct.
Tim, can you talk briefly about, because I know whenever we get into this discussion about fund balance, there's a tendency to think of that as, you know, dollars that we have throughout the year.
Sure.
But this is a snapshot as of six thirty, and I think we need to
Right.
Remember that there's highs and lows with that. Plus, those dollars aren't all dollars. Some of that is accounts receivable.
Receivables.
So.
Right, yeah.
When you start breaking down those, that amount.
Yeah. That's, yeah, that's a very good point, that general fund, when we do accounting, general fund is, is not cash. It's not all cash. It consists of your assets less your liabilities, and then you've got your fund balance. And so one of, one of the reasons we do need to maintain a fund balance is that we have the ups and downs. Some months, we go with very little aid. We're very little cash flow coming into the district. But of course, we're spending ratably. Because of the way the tax settlements work, we'll get a chunk of money, and we, it spans over a couple of months. We're, we're not getting much. So it's important to have cash flow to cover those times. And that's one, one portion. Again, that, that, when you're looking at the fund balance, it's, it's another reason our bond rating is, is one of the higher bond ratings in the state also. It's because of the fund balance. When we do the ratings call with Moody's, they always mention in that, if you look at their report, it's a, a strong position of the, of the district, a strong financial position that helps that bond rating. So our borrowing is, costs us less. And we don't cash, we don't have to, we don't have to borrow for operations, which, again, there are a number of districts that do that. And that's just to, to help pay for their operations, and that's something we don't have to do. So we don't incur extra interest expense there.
Okay. Thanks, Tim. The other thing is, just to be clear, that that one hundred and ninety million, that TIF, that TIF property valuation is coming on the following year.
Right.
But the eight hundred thousand is revenue that we get in this coming fiscal year, correct?
That's correct. The eight hundred thousand is revenue, and the one hundred and ninety million is valuation addition to our district real estate valuation. And that one will occur in oh nine, ten. So that's, that's.
So likely that one hundred and ninety million is going to affect our tertiary aid.
It will have, yes, it will have a couple of effects. One, if state formulas stay the same as they are, it's certainly going to affect our negative tertiary aid because it will bump our valuation per member up. We're already above state average. That's why we get the penalty. And so it will bump it up a little more, and we will lose additional, we'll lose additional state aid on that. That's the, that's the bad part, but.
Okay. Any questions? Again, this is a preliminary budget. It's a work in progress. We'll be getting more information and data that's likely going to change that budget picture. But thanks, Tim, for giving us that.
Okay, I think I missed, let's see.
Is there another piece?
There's one page I missed here. Okay. Mill rate calculation. And that is right after the expenditures. This is mill rate calculation for the two thousand eight, two thousand nine levy. We're projecting, you can see under oh eight, oh nine, go down to the bottom of that, of the list of, of years there. So two thousand eight, two thousand nine. The Department of Revenue's preliminary estimate of district valuation is three billion five twenty-five. So you can see that's only up point five eight percent this year. And certainly with the state of the economy, amount of foreclosures, the building slowdowns, that's to be expected that that number is going to come in low. The last time we had a number like that was back in ninety-two, ninety-three, and that was three point eight seven. So it's been a long time since, and I don't know when, if ever, we've had a point five eight, but it's, so it's pretty low. You can see the total levy amount is twenty-six million seven ninety-four. Now, that includes general fund levy and debt service levy. And that amounts to a change of eight point six five percent over the previous year. That brings the mill rate to seven dollars and sixty cents. And that percentage change is eight dollars and two cents above the previous year's mill rate. One, one thing I did just to, so you can get a, an idea of what a higher increase in valuation would do to the mill rate is, for comparison, if you looked at the valuation going up three percent to three million six ten, and then go all the way over to the right, everything else is the same, if you go over all the way to the right, the mill rate would have been seven forty-two with a five point four nine percent increase. So it gives you a little bit of an idea of what happens to the mill rate and how it's affected by the valuation increase and the rate of the increase.
Okay. And that's, that certainly is a good point, Tim. Especially when you look at, you know, in the early two thousand, two thousand one through five, you know, we're looking at double-digit changes in valuation from year to year. And now we're down to under a percent. So it does make a difference. Brian?
Just a couple of questions. Tim, if we pulled another million dollars out of the, of the fund balance to, you know, offset the tax levy, you know, right now we have five hundred thousand dollars. So we did one point five million. What would be the impact to our state aid in the subsequent year?
If we, if we use another million out of fund balance, we, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be any negative impact because the spending level is the same. We're just, but we're just pulling out of fund balance. Now, the reason it impacted, impacted us negatively, when we look at pulling those dollars, or putting those dollars in general fund for Rivercrest, is because that's on top of our expenditures already. So, you know, we're essentially adding.
So there's no impact to state aid by taking more money out of the fund balance?
There would be, no, there would be no impact. Yeah, I would, I would add that to try and mitigate the effect of that negative tertiary aid, you know, we've tried to, tried to take the money out ratably over the three years of the construction of Rivercrest rather than just boom, taking three and a half million out, which would have a pretty detrimental effect all at once.
That's where I misunderstood. So this was presented in the finance committee last night. And just for the record, I've, I've talked to Tim and Mary that, just want to do a little bit more, this is just the preliminary, so we still have some more work to do on this. And one thing is, I like to look at is the direct costs associated with Rivercrest and opening that, and kind of take that aside and look at kind of the budget and do some comparisons with the budget with previous years after we kind of take the direct costs of Rivercrest, which would be, you know, the, the additional, the startup costs and the additional faculty and teachers. And kind of just do a level set in the budget. the startup costs and the additional faculty and teachers, and kind of just do a level set in the budget that way. And then I would like to do, one other thing is just, I'd like to do a cash flow of the general fund and look at on a monthly basis kind of what the low watermark is. Just do one more due diligence on the fund balance, on the 25 to 30%. I just think it's appropriate just to look at one more time and look at where does the low watermark happen, and how many times a year does it happen, and how low does it get? Could we talk about, it's kind of our fund that we don't have to go to cash, we don't have to go to short-term cash?
That's right.
So let's look at how much buffer, you know, let's do some worst-case analysis. Just take one more look at it.
And we have looked at it for, I think, three or four years. So that should be a document that maybe we could just update it for the most recent year.
Maybe bring it out to the full board, too.
We probably also need to adjust and consider adding the square footage that we've added in the district in relationship to that cash flow.
So if we can do that next Finance Committee, and then we can bring appropriate information to the board.
We'll do that.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, Tim? We'll keep on moving. Thanks, Tim. Topics for action. If you recall, we juggled that a little bit. So we're going to drop down to New Hudson School District logo. Mayor, logo, Mary.
Thank you. As you know, HSD 2025 is our strategic plan, and it sets the direction for the future. And as we consider it, that should guide our actions, what we say, what we do, and certainly the symbols that we use. So as a result of that, we want our symbols to communicate to our community and to those outside our community what we represent and the direction that we're going to go. So I asked Tracy to work on updating our logo and having it be one of those symbols that would help communicate HSD 2025. So Tracy?
So what you have in your packets, as well as what's up on the screen, and I'm going to send the board around because then you can see what, when it's printed, so that you definitely have the true colors of the document. So what we started out with after we completed everything with HSD 2025, I met with several potential designers, and we talked about what we needed this logo to incorporate. And what we looked at was, we wanted the logo to incorporate the district's new long-range strategic plan direction, emphasizing learning, our global connections, and the environmental sustainability. We ended up working with Aijos Saifullah with Corridor Design. And Aijos is a resident here in Hudson, has been designing with Corridor since 1995, and has three students, or three kids, in the district. And the design that, trying to get rid of that thing up there. So that was his task. And so what he developed then for us after getting input, and then I also continued to talk to people throughout this process, both within the district and to community members. And so the design that we have before us is student-centered. So as you look at it, the student is surrounded and supported by the Hudson School District, literally the words. The student in the thinking pole is representing the future focus, looking forward, thinking, considering his or her place in the world, that contemplated, contemplative look. The student or graduate is, if you haven't noticed this already, is reflected in the globe and underscoring that our graduates are an integral part of the world, and that global connectedness is an expectation. And then the green swish that's underneath the globe, supporting environmental sustainability, that green needs to be there, the sustainability is important to the vitality of the planet as well as all of us. So those are, as Aijos worked on this, those were all of the things that, as he was looking at it, and that as we have spoken with others, that we wanted to express in this logo. And as I said, I've spoken with people within the district, but also community members. And just a quick feedback from those community members, I did not get one negative response on the logo, which was great. And a lot of people who really liked it, they thought it was nice to have that student piece, that it was really, it's obviously about learning. And that the student, the graduate on the earth, looking at the future, it was unique and it was clear. It's obvious what our purpose is as a district. And then the graduate thinking about how to make a difference in the world. And again, very much focused on students and that global connectedness, which we really wanted to be able to achieve, which represents what the vision for HSD 2025 addresses.
Any questions for Tracy? Tracy, I just have a, I really like the design and everything that's behind it, but I'm curious how it looks when you shrink it down onto letterhead.
That will be, I've messed with it a bit. And Aijos will be working with us to figure out how to, you know, what the look is, or what we will want. Actually, we're putting together a postcard right now that will be going out to talk about the dedication day, which turned out very nice with this particular logo, just to look at, to see how it would turn out. So that's come together well. And then also the website. And just as a good note, the website now provides us the support that we can change that website and that look without any additional cost to the district.
You've also looked at it in a one color, positive and negative. And it shows up very well that way as well.
And the way he, like, he's changed it so, you know, I've looked at it in a business card, how it would look. Again, we can look at it with all blue, all green, or black in the business card. So there's a variety of options, but.
You can also see, I think, that you can get a really nice square graphic out of this, too. And so I think that in addition to the grayscale and black and white options, we might find the use of a square graphic in some applications. Very wonderful here. So I think, I really like it. I really like it a lot.
Okay, well, this is a topic for action, so.
I move that we authorize the adoption of this logo for the district.
We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Thanks, Tracy, and good work on developing that. Nancy, staffing additions.
You have a loose, one-page document associated with this item. The Personnel Committee met on July 29th and considered these staffing needs, and we're recommending them to the board tonight. At the last meeting, we talked about pending art, FIED, and music, and this is at the elementary level. We needed to look at that now that we have established the new school. We've balanced the student enrollments, and we've transferred teachers. The last step was to take a look at how that affected art, music, and FIED, and to make sure that those programs and services were sufficient and equitable at each of our elementaries. So we're recommending the equivalent of .08 elementary art, .285 elementary FIED teacher, and .25 elementary music teacher, for a total of .615, and a total of 22,570 estimated additional salary. In addition, we did, through the Personnel Committee, again, look at the enrollments in those monitored classrooms. If you'll recall, last, at the last meeting, we had identified five different grade levels at several of our sites to monitor. And on, at the time of the meeting, and then again, just prior to this board meeting, the monitored elementary class sizes do not require additional classroom teachers at this time. Also represented and discussed at the Personnel Committee, and actually, I think the discussion began at Policy and Governance, but we are recommending that the Communication Specialist Services, currently provided by Tracy, that that be changed to an employee position, part-time, at .75. And the reason for that has to do with compliance with IRS laws for employment. And should you wish to know more about that, Tim Erickson is very articulate. He is actually the one that brought that concern forward. We, this past year, spent $59,450 for the Communication Specialist Services, and we are estimating the salary amount to be 52.5, however prorated, to 43.750 because this would begin on September 1st, you know, following action of the board. So we're recommending that. And then a very small part of a position at the high school, .17 high school business education teacher for an estimated amount of just a little over $6,000. That would be a one-year-only position, subject to next year's scheduling of students. It is needed to serve two diversified occupation classes at the high school.
Okay. Thanks, Nancy. I'm always amazed at how you have a .08. Any questions, Nancy?
I'm just gonna, oh, excuse me, I'm just gonna, like, talk here, just comment, really to compliment Nancy and her staff, just sort of along those lines, a lot of tweaking, a lot of fine tuning. I mean, she's really, you know, turned this thing every which way but loose to try to have the most minimal impact as far as their staffing goes, but yet meeting the needs of our students. So again, my compliments to Nancy and her staff.
And the principals.
And the principals.
The elementary principals worked very hard to, on the scheduling. And also, in some cases, the extra period assignments for our art, music, and FIED teachers in order to make this happen in the most cost-effective way.
Right. And just as I believe Nancy already said, the Personnel Committee did unanimously endorse these additions.
If there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the staffing additions.
So moved.
Motion by Cindy.
I'll second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Thanks, Nancy, again. We'll move on to the Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant Service Contract. Barb?
This is a person who has been employed by our district for quite some time. We've had her through the contract with Special Children's Center. And this would be a separate contract with her as an individual, rather than through Special Children's Center, and it will, in fact, save the district money.
Is this also something through the Personnel Committee? No? Okay. Any questions?
Barb, I have a question. We did a few, like this, a month or two ago. This is just an additional individual relative to the ones we looked at.
This was originally proposed to be a district employee, and that was turned down last month. And so we're looking at it as an independent contract. And again, this would be a cost savings to the district compared to being a district employee. So one step at a time.
Right.
But you're right, it is the same procedure.
We did have to look at some IRS regulation in relationship to this, and I don't know, Tim, if you want to address that or not.
Right, we did talk to the individual involved, since they're providing services to other entities in a, as a business owner, they do not have to be treated as an employee in this case.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for approval of this contract.
Move to approve this contract for occupational therapy assistant.
Motion by Cindy.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Thanks, Barb. We'll move on to Item 9D, Employee Assistant Program Contract with Family Means.
Okay. And again, in your materials, you have a one-page flyer here of four bullets. Basically, this is the, this would be the eighth year of a continuing contract with Family Means. It provides our employees with services for mental health assessment and treatment, financial counseling, concerns surrounding the elderly, and referral for drug and alcohol abuse or addiction. The cost is $1,647 annually for administration fees. This is up 10 cents per employee, or a total increase of $168. This is the first increase in the administrative fee in three years. And in addition to that, is an estimated $2,304 for actual employee utilization of the service. There's no increase in that particular fee. There's a maximum of two sessions per employee. Because we have more employees now than we did previously, that part of the contract increases by $38. And so the total additional cost from last year is $206. Our employee utilization average is around 2%. Last year, we had 2.39% of our employees access one or more of these types of services. And Family Means indicates this is typical of other similar contracts. So I would recommend, and this was reviewed by the Personnel Committee, and is recommended for action.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion unless there's questions.
Mr. President, I move approval of the new contract of Family Means.
We have a motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Brian. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. And then the last item under that category is Early Childhood Head Start Collaboration Agreement.
For some time, we've had an agreement with Head Start, which is through CISA 11, that we had four slots that were provided in Hudson Schools, part of early childhood, and they needed to be Hudson residents. The request now is that we would have eight slots for children eligible for Head Start, again, in collaboration with our early childhood. And so my request to you tonight is that we would sign this agreement contingent upon two things. One, that we are assured that they are all Hudson residents only. And the second thing that we want to make sure that we have is that we have full acceptance of Head Start, of the financial responsibility for having an educational assistant, which would be the support personnel to support the additional portions of the program that are not part of early childhood. For example, they must be served school lunch, they must brush their teeth following lunch. That needs to be supervised, you know, when they're preschool age. So that would be a fee that we would then turn back to Head Start. It would be approximately $10,000. That's what they currently pay us for the existing educational assistant, and so there would be a second person to be added. I'm not asking for that person, I'm asking that it would be a conditional approval if Head Start promises to do those things.
Okay. Any questions for Barb? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Cindy.
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. And then finally, I believe we're at the consent items. Personnel and expenditures. Anybody have the expenditures handy?
They're $4,074,876.48.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent items.
And in addition to that, Dan, Policy 5403, Students with Disabilities Revision, it's a consent.
Yep. Thanks for pointing that out.
Mr. President, move to approve the consent items in addition, the payment authorization to pay $4,074,876.48.
Okay, we have a motion of the consent items.
Second.
Second. Second by Cindy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. Item 10, Committee Reports. Barb, report on the Learning and Program Development Committee meeting.
I'm happy to. Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met on Thursday, July 17th, and we did a few things, one of which is we drafted, for your review and approval tonight, the committee commission, which should have been in your packets. So if you can turn to that page. And I, it's Agenda Item 10A. Page 38.
Barb, I just want to clarify, that's not an action item.
It's just a report out?
It is.
Thank you.
The, the committee really took action on that.
Okay, so I guess I'll, I would entertain an opportunity for any questions from the rest of the board around the commission that we drafted.
Any questions for Barb regarding the commission? I thought it looked fine, so...
I did, too.
Okay?
Very good. Some of the other things that the committee did during our meeting is with Sandy Kovac's help, we reviewed two of the focus areas for the upcoming school year, which includes a continuation of the reading and literacy work that has been started in the elementary schools. And then we also spent a fair amount of time talking about the implementation of the new science curriculum in the secondary schools, what that means. The change in that curriculum will include the use of an, of the inquiry method of instruction at the secondary level, both middle high and senior high, as well as the addition of technology into that science learning area. And so that, that will be an area of focus for, for those schools and for that part of the district staff and administration. The committee also reviewed the structure for presenting the SMART goals that you heard tonight. And then finally, the committee did spend a little bit of time, if you recall at the last board meeting, we saw the district assessment results, and one of the questions that was asked during the board meeting was to look at disaggregated results by separate student populations. We spent a fair amount of time talking about those disaggregated results, and what we concluded as a committee is, at this point, none of those populations are large enough to be really statistically representative, but we agreed that we would keep our, keep monitoring it, so that if there was something, we would certainly report that back to the full board. That was it.
Okay. Thanks, Barb. Any questions for Barb and the committee? Okay. We'll move on to Governance and Policy. This is a new committee as well, and we met on the 22nd of July, covered a number, number of items, including the commission similar to what Barb had with her committee, and we decided to go forward with that. We had a brief discussion on paperless board meetings and, and the feasibility of that, and I think we'll continue to look at that as a goal. And we also looked at the '08-'09 Superintendent Goals and the district goals that we had reviewed a while back as a board. Then the ongoing discussion regarding the 612 long-term space for learning process. As you all know, the Facilities and Grounds Committee is also looking at, you know, that issue as it relates to solutions for 612 long-term space. And I guess the, the outcome of our discussion on that was, we need to have a Board of Education Work Session, and I think that's been communicated to you in terms of a possible date for that to occur. So that will, that will be an exciting discussion when we get to that. Communication about River Crest and sustainability. I think we've, you know, had good discussion tonight about River Crest and, and some of our efforts to get the word out about, you know, that, the need design and, and where we're going with that school and, and some of the events surrounding the opening of River Crest. Special education policy revisions, we, we reviewed that briefly, and then we tried to develop some meeting dates for the, for the committee in the next few months, and we struggled with that a little bit, but I think we've, we've, we've set one or two dates into the, into the future, so I'll entertain any questions regarding the committee. If not, Personnel and Negotiations, Mark?
Okay. The Personnel Committee did meet two weeks ago, on the 29th of July, and many of the items we've already covered today. That would be the, the staffing update that Nancy presented us with, the teaching positions, communication specialist, the Family Means Program, and of course, what else here? Oh, okay, that, and then the other items that we didn't talk about, we had discussed and, and recommended a stipend to be offered to administrators, coordinators and supervisors who don't enroll in the district's health insurance plan. It saves us, rough estimates are between $5,000 and $15,000 a year, based on the number of people that take that, take that option. And we also had a closed session for discussion of personnel issue.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Any questions, comments for Mark? Brian, Finance Committee.
We met last night at 8:00. Just covered three things. One was Nancy told briefly on how she and her department are reducing the environmental spend in her IT assets. One thing of note is we virtualized our server backend, so we had 21 servers, so we had 21 machines, and that's turned into four, leveraging virtualization technology, so that's probably the most important thing we've done to reduce our power consumption. There's many other things, plugables and the like, but, so that was good to see, that plan. We reviewed the quarterly financial report for '07-'08 that we already reviewed, and we did the '08-'09 preliminary budget, and I've already made my comments on that, so questions?
Okay. Thanks, Brian. We do have a citizen's request to speak. Kurt Weiss, and he'd like to talk about various and assorted topics. Just a reminder of the five-minute rule that we have, so go ahead. If you could state your name and address, please.
Kurt Weiss, 613 Cedar Drive, North, North Hudson. You know, three hours after the meeting started, just so the new board members know, it never used to be like this. Mr. Turnahoy and some of his friends up there decided a few years ago that the citizens should have to wait till the end of the meeting to speak, and I think you should be ashamed of that. I've had to sit back here for three hours to wait to speak. I, I live in my home and pay a tax under the threat of you confiscating my property, and you make me wait for three hours to speak. You ought to be ashamed of yourself, Board Chair, ashamed of yourself. You got this new logo that you're, that you just brought out tonight, and I, and I think in sticking with your global theme and the fact that you work as hard as you can to restrict free speech, maybe you ought to contact Vladimir Putin to, to help you with your new logo. I can envision it right now. Some things that I saw in the board packet, you approved the board packet tonight, the expenditures, B&amp;B Electric gave $500 to the funnel. That's funneling money from the school district to the Y. $500, and we gave them $30,000 this month. I find that a little bit disturbing. A vendor gave $500, and we spent $30,000 with them in one month. Some other things I find disturbing is that we're, we're still paying, whoop. We're still paying the former finance director to come in here and consult with our district this month, $2,300 and some dollars, and we're paying the new finance director over $100,000, over $100,000. I think maybe that since Mr. Fed is still coming in here as an official request for information, which this is right now, official request for information, three years ago we asked for the audited expense reports of former Superintendent Ron Berth. That never took place. I'm a citizen asking for audited expense reports from former Superintendent Ron Berth. Three years ago, that never took place. Instead, I was let out of here by the police. You have to wait till the end of the meeting, and then you're put on the clock. I've been speaking for two minutes, I've got three minutes left. These are official requests for, oh, no, wait a minute, I got to talk about sustainability. You've been patting yourselves on the back about sustainability all night. In fact, this person from the architectural firm, this Hoffman Architect, said she sees that school as a windswept prairie. That's funny, it looked a lot more like a windswept prairie two years ago than it does now. People I talked to say that's a god-awful-looking building. Put your signature on it, it looks terrible. And you ought to be ashamed of yourselves, we're sitting in this beautiful auditorium, and you guys are going to meet this month and say that this is inadequate facility. You're going to meet this month and tell the citizens who are being thrown out of their homes, who are being foreclosed on, that this facility is inadequate. I've seen it already, the principal has said that this facility, this auditorium, is inadequate. Unbelievable. Sustainability? Sustainability is not giving, over the course of the last 10 years, an average, including step increases, to the teachers of 5% to 6% a year, well above the QEO. Is that sustainability? The fact that each of these kids that you profess to help are going to have to save up, out of their penny jar, over a million dollars per teacher, almost $3 million, just for the superintendent to pay for post-benefit retirement package and a guaranteed pension? You talk about sustainability? That's not sustainability. I've got a minute and a half left. These are official requests for information this evening. How much did we spend on attorney's fees for the '07-'08 school year? I know we spent $2,800 alone on Mr. Hollins trying to figure out if he's still in conflict of interest, which he is. This is official request for information. How much is each board member given to the funnel? I know we have one sitting up there that chuckles a lot that gave 50 bucks. That's a big contribution. Another one here is an official request for information. Well, when's the date for the new high school referendum? You guys already know that, don't you? February? You can't do it two weeks before Christmas, we've already done that. The next request for information, official. Who approved this rebuttal to Steve Keller on the district website? That's political propaganda, and you're using my tax dollars for political propaganda on a website that I pay for. That's not a service to the students, that's political propaganda, that you're defending yourself on that website. That's wrong, that should be taken off immediately. Check with the lawyers, they'll charge you a lot, but check with them. And the last question I have, official request for information, I've got 17 seconds. How long is Mary Bowen Eggerbraden known Paul Hoffman, the guy who got a contract for $225,000 more than the next close bidder? You know, and I'm leaving because I'm not going to sit around, I've been insulted enough tonight to have to sit here for three hours, so I'm not going to wait for your response. So if Mr. Kyzer Sat wants to make fun of me after I leave, be more than happy to do so.
Okay. Welcome back, Kurt. Any comments? Mary?
I do have one, I just want to clarify. We have a couple times on our agenda where citizens can address issues that are coming before the Board of Education, and those are on action items that the board is taking action on, and the board listens to the citizens on that particular item before, prior to their taking action. The request to speak at the end of the agenda are for things not on the agenda.
It's a good point, Mary, and I'd like to think that, you know, whether it's Kurt or anybody else in the audience, that there is some value in what we're doing up here, and it might have some value to learn about what's happening in the school district, so...
I have to add, because I was incorrect in one last statement. The one at the end of the agenda is for those comments that cannot be made during the agenda, so someone can speak on particular action items, but say in the reports. You cannot speak to a report at the time of the report, so it would have to be after. But any time that the board is taking action, our citizens do have the opportunity to speak prior to the board taking action.
Mary, just for clarification, the district requires and is legally able to require that all requests for public information be made in writing, is that right or is that wrong?
No, they can be made verbally.
Okay, so we will take these as...
We will respond to those. Some of them are not records requests, I'm, I'm not aware of any records on a number of those questions, they're questions, but we will make a formal response.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other comments, we'll move on to Item 13, adjourned to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent F, for the purpose of preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems in investigation of charges against an employee. I have a...
So moved.
Second.
Second. We'll have a roll call vote.
Robson, aye.
Turnahoy, aye.
Kyzer Sat, aye.
Bell, aye.
Crimmins, aye. Van Loonan, aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone.